The regular meeting in the Southern Shores Town Council for December the 5th, 2017 is now in session. Before I ask you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and the moment of silence, I'd like to wish you all a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. The holidays are fast approaching. Just want you to know, I won't see most of you, but we're now in January, so God bless and happy, happy, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Thank you. This time, I ask you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Counsel, I need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion, Counsel? The agenda's approved, thank you. Need a motion, Counsel, to approve the consent agenda, consent agenda which is approved with minutes of November the 9th, 2017. Tab one in your book. Motion to approve.
I would make that motion, but it says a copy of the attach to the minutes is on there, and we haven't received that, and it's not in here to be approved, so minus that.
Where is it?
But it's not, hadn't been sent in our package, it wasn't in the package. Minus that.
Are you on the table? All right, thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is made to carry to approve the consent agenda.
Minus those minutes, minus those.
That attachment.
That attachment.
Thank you, Gary. Did you get that, Leo?
Minus the attachment.
Yes. The one that says, "It's attached," and it's not.
Do you have a copy of this?
There's a finding board report. There's a petition at the end. There's a speech at the end.
Speech at the end. All of them.
Well, I mean, what would it take to print out the attachments, so that we could accept them in the minutes?
We can do it.
I've never had the attachments.
We've never had the attachments there, they've all.
I know, it's a formality, but if they're part of your units, it's included.
They are online, right?
Yes.
Yes.
They're not.
Okay. Well, we can address that. Okay? Thank you.
Well, how, how to address that?
We'll have to do them at the next meeting.
I think the question is, does Counsel want those attachments attached to the minutes or not? Because they are what they are. They're not part of the actual minutes of the meeting, so if you want them attached, yes or no? She can not put them in.
Well, let's discuss that right now. I'd make a motion that we do not attach them to the minutes, that we leave it the way it is right now.
I think you need to strike that reference, if you're gonna do that.
Good point. That makes sense, to strike the reference to them.
Then I have to attach them.
Just strike, just not mention them being, as being a part of these minutes, just not include them.
Is that all attachments, or one, or two, or three?
We don't know what it is from meeting to meeting.
So that's three attachments that won't be included in the minutes?
Finding board report, fire substance petition, and Leo's speech.
I mean, what does it take to attach them? I mean, what's, we're.
I've never had the attachment.
We've never had them as part of the minutes, so.
They're in the minutes, probably.
I don't know what this, why this came up, but it did, so we need to address it. And I'm having a motion out there on the floor, waiting for a second to not, not attach the minutes, the, yeah.
Not attach, not have the attachments with the minutes.
Thank you, Leo.
And remove the reference.
And remove the reference to them, yeah.
And the next meeting, we'll just amend, amend the minutes or something.
We won't have to, if we vote on not having them.
Well, you vote on not having them, it won't be an issue.
Okay.
So I have a motion to not include them in the future, and I'm waiting for a second.
I'll second it.
And one of the provisions is that we, that we, what was your comment, Gary? That we not.
Not reference.
Not reference in the minutes themselves.
The copy is attached, the copy's, it says a copy of which is attached to the minutes.
What would you think, what you see is that the copy of which is on file?
Well, it's not on file right now, that's why, that's my point.
That's where she can put it on file.
But it can't be, we can't approve it unless we see it.
Right. All right.
Is it, is it the?
And I do read it.
And that, and that's why I was getting at, can we just print the thing out, approve it right now, and be done with it?
All.
Is that too easy?
Are we, any more discussion? All in favor of my motion, Counsel?
Aye.
Counsel.
Mr. Mayor, is the intent of the Counsel for the clerk to bring those documents in the January proposed minutes, for this meeting? Is that the intent?
Is that your intent, Counsel? They're available online. So I would say not, but that's, that's up to other members of Counsel. If you wanna see them in hard copy, why?
If they're gonna be part of the minutes, we need to see them. If they're not gonna be part of the minutes, I don't care.
Right.
Well, as I understand the vote that you just took, they're not part of the minutes, but they're part of the record of the meeting.
They're part of the record, but not here.
Okay. Thank you.
That's the way, that's the way we'll post that.
Let's move on, it's a little more pleasant subject. This time, I'd like to take a minute and recognize outgoing Counsel Member Leo Holland, who I've served with in one capacity or another for many years, and who I think has given back in many ways to our community. I wanna personally thank Leo for his many years of service, not only to our town, as a member of the Board of Adjustments, and for the last four years as a Councilman, but for his other efforts on behalf of our community as well. As a board member and president of the SSCA, as a board member and president of the CPOA, as an officer in the Southern Shores Boat Club, as an usher in his church, Holy Redeemer, as a member, a member in past Grand Night in the Knights of Columbus. He also, while serving on Counsel, was our representative to the Tourism Board, where he served on the Steering Committee, as well as Assistant Treasurer, and as Assistant Chairperson, and on the Budget and Finance Committees. I wanna thank him not only for his service, but for his friendship and support. I know I speak for many in this room when I say, "We wish you the very best, Leo." Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Before I step down, I just wanna thank some people. One, I wanna thank Mary Ellen for the four years of support with me. I also wanna thank the voters four years ago that gave me the privilege of serving these four years and representing you on the Counsel. The other groups I wanna talk or thank is, starting with Peter, our Town Manager, who helped guide me along in how, how town councils are supposed to work and interface. Bonnie, Sheila, and I can't, can't remember our receptionist now.
Cynthia.
Cynthia, and Dabney and Wes, all were, helped me along to learn what, what was going on in the town and how it, how it functions. The Police Chief, Chief Cole and his group, Lieutenant Slagel, Officer Pharoah, Officer Jones, Officer Ebert, those are the ones I interacted the most with. Officer Ebert and I've got a little bit of closeness here, he's a Brother Knight with me. I know a time or two when I was Grand Knight, he'd come to our meetings, or a few people at the meeting thought I'd been assigned the bodyguard, so that was a little sidelight to it. And the Fire Department, Chief Limbacher and his group, Paul and Dave, who I worked a little bit on a couple of classes, Beth and Michael Heslam, and I see Laura Ly around here. Those are some of the ones I interacted the most with, and in our Public Works Group over there that worked pretty hard of keeping the town neat for us. So those are the ones that I wanna thank, and I'm not leaving town. I'll be around, you know, I might be like a bad penny and turn up, so that is where I'm at. And I'll see you all around, and also Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Thank you, Zoe.
Jim?
I have to read this for sale.
I'm printing it.
James M. Connors do hereby solemnly swear, having been duly elected Mayor of the Town of Southern Shores by the municipal election held on November 7th, 2017, that I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States, and the Constitution and laws of the State of North Carolina, not inconsistent with that, I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties imposed upon me as Mayor of the Town of Southern Shores by law, so help me God. Thank you.
(Applause).
Jim?
I have to read this for sale.
I'm printing it.
You put a little bit, Jim.
Right here. Hold the Bible for you. All right.
I, James M. Connors, do hereby solemnly swear, having been duly elected as Counsel Member of the Town of Southern Shores by the municipal election held on November 7th, 2017, that I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States, and the Constitution and laws of the State of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties imposed upon me as Counsel Member of the Town of Southern Shores by law, so help me God. Thank you.
Congratulations, sir. Jim?
All overboard, Jim. Thank you. Once again, I wanna thank everyone who supported me in this last election, especially my wife, who was a rock through the whole process, and I just admire and respect so much what she, what she provided to me during this time, this last two and a half, three months. I was especially proud of our residents and the way you participated. Over forty percent of you turned out. The best turnout in any town in Derrick County, I believe. We had almost eleven hundred and fifty people vote out of twenty-seven hundred possible voters, eligible voters, which is not high by the standards you like to set, but it's a pretty high record, pretty high mark for most of the towns on the Outer Banks. Really proud of you. It is now time for Counsel to work together in a positive way, in the best interest of our town. We have many opportunities ahead of us over these next years, and there are challenges too. Completing our town code rewrite, updating our land use plan, moving farther with our walking path on East Dogwood, looking at options to complete a South Dogwood path as well, working with our, with our volunteer fire department on their needs for the future, monitoring our beach and making sure we're included in any re- renervation projects that may take place on the Outer Banks, especially by our neighboring towns, and continuing to manage our resources as efficiently as possible, while working closely with staff to budget effectively. I'm looking forward to this, I'm hoping you are too. And now I'll turn it over to Jim Connor, he may have some remarks he'd like to make as well.
Good evening. I'll try and make this very short and straight to the point. I wanna thank everybody for being here tonight, and I'd also like to thank everybody who came out to vote. We, Southern Shores did, lived up to their reputation as having a high voter turnout. I'd like to thank Hal Dennehy. Tom has spoken and given thanks to Leo Holland, and I agree with that and could not add any more to that, but with Hal Dennehy, I don't know where you would begin or end. His contributions to our town have been so enormous for decades, in so many different capacities, that he is just, you know, he left a, he is so much of what Southern Shores is all about. He was recently awarded the Longleaf Pine Award by the state, which is a very distinguished and, I mean, a prestigious and distinguishing award, that's, you know, speaks volumes to how much he meant to our town. As we move forward, and being a newly elected Counsel person, I'm gonna look forward to working with everybody in town as we tackle the issues and challenges, both seen and unforeseen, that we may be facing. But I'd like to also mention that we're gonna have opportunities also. And also, when I speak about everyone, I mean our fire, police, our schools, our civic associations, everybody, all the people, individuals, and groups that make up our community, Southern Being, the first time I've even spoken up here at Counsel, I think it's inappropriate for me to try, you know, start making motions right away, but for our next Counsel meeting in January, I would like to ask if we can add an agenda item to discuss the Dogwood Trail walkway, beginning at NC-12 and East Dogwood, and proceeding toward the intersection of North-South and East Dogwood. We have engineering plans, we have grant money approved, we've, we're all good to go on that. So anyway, I'd just like to ask if we can bring that up at our next Counsel meeting in January. Again, I wanna thank everybody in town, everybody who participated in voting, the meetings, the civic associations, or other volunteer groups that you belong to and participate in. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. This time, we go to item four, organization of Counsel in 2018 meetings. First, I would like to thank Councilman Newberry for his service as Mayor Pro Tem during these past two years. Thank you, Fred. Counsel, I move that Chris Nation serve as the Mayor Pro Tem, and that in lieu of him serving on the Capital Infrastructure Improvement Planning Committee, Councilman Connors serve as that committee's co-chair. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I'd move that we reelect Fred as Mayor Pro Tem.
I have a motion on the floor already to.
Well, I think you're supposed to open nominations first.
Technically, so you'd like to make a motion that we elect Fred?
Well, I just would nominate Fred.
You'd like to open nominations?
Yes.
I can do that. Nominations are open for Mayor Pro Tem, and I withdraw my original motion, and would now accept nominations for Mayor Pro Tem. Gary, you wanna repeat your motion?
I'd just nominate Fred.
And you, I have a second?
I'll second a second. You don't need a second.
You don't need a second on nominations, Tom.
Thank you.
Okay. I understand. All in favor of Mr., Mr.?
You'd wanna ask first if there are any other nominations?
I ask it.
Oh, I'm gonna get more of them?
Yep.
All right, I got you, I got you, I got the sequence now. Are there other nominations for this musician, of Mayor Pro Tem?
Yeah, I'd like to nominate Gary McDonald.
All right. Are there other nominations for Mayor Pro Tem?
I'll do it. I'll nominate myself.
I'm nominating Chris Nation.
I've already nominated Chris Nation.
Yes.
So you have Mr. Nation, you have Mr. McDonald, and you have Mr. Newberry, all running for Mayor Pro Tem. Mr. Newberry first, if he was the first nominee?
I don't know that there's an easy way to decide who to go first, but that sounds like a reasonable method to go first, with who was nominated first, assuming there aren't any other nominations, but you're running out of people to nominate him.
We are.
We could nominate Jim, make a forum.
All in favor of Mr., Mr. Newberry, assuming the, retaining the role as Mayor Pro Tem, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign.
Aye.
All in favor of having Mr. McDonald serve as Mayor Pro Tem, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I see, did you like?
I'm not voting on that.
All right, thank you.
I'll abstain.
That makes you a yes vote.
That makes you a yes vote.
I don't know.
All in favor?
Rules.
All opposed to Mr. McDonald? Aye.
Aye.
All, all in favor of Mr. Chris Nation serving as the Mayor Pro Tem? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. So, Mr. Nation, you are the new Mayor Pro Tem. As a, as a part of that same motion, and a new motion, I will introduce a new motion, that in lieu of him serving on the Capital Infrastructure Improvement Committee, where he, where he would serve as a Mayor Pro Tem, I would like to have Councilman Connors serve as that committee's co-chairman. I need a motion to second, second that motion?
I'll second it.
All right, thank you, Chris. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So Councilman Connors will serve on the, on the, on the Capital Infrastructure Improvement Planning Committee?
A point of order. When we reestablished that committee, we said that the Mayor Pro Tem and the Mayor would serve as the co-chairs of that committee.
That's right. That was a policy thing, that wasn't.
What is, that's a rule issue.
No, it wasn't a rule of procedure, it was a policy.
When it was reestablished, it was established as the rules of that committee.
Peter, would you address that?
In search of the minutes, it was a motion to, a policy motion establishing the CIP Committee, and also to place the Mayor and Mayor Pro Tem as the co-chairs, and that was the motion, and it was, it was not a rules of procedure, in the Counsel's rules of procedure. So effectively, if you change that, you change that, if you don't, you don't.
So if.
We understand it's been, from the clerk.
My motion would change that to allow any Counsel member to serve on that committee as a co-chair.
Okay, and.
And I have, and I propose that we, that Mr. Councilman Connors serve on that committee as co-chair.
If you do that, then you need to open, to open the floor for nominations from the Counsel, for nominations to that position of that committee, if you open it back up to where any, I'm just saying, we need to follow rules of procedure, and not just.
As I understood, I understand what you're saying, but.
Right.
As a procedural issue, I consider it as a, as a policy issue.
Well, there's two, two things there. One was a policy issue, in that we reestablished that committee and appointed those two positions to serve. And now you're making a motion that you open it to any Counsel member, not necessarily Mayor Pro Tem.
No, my original motion was that I would like to have Mr. Connors serve on that committee, on that committee.
But if you do, if you make a change in that rule, then you need to open the floor for nominations to committee. Any, any Counsel member can make a nomination to a committee.
I understand what Gary's saying.
I understand too, so we can.
I mean, you can't just, I'm sorry, you just can't dictate what we're doing up here, you gotta follow the rules.
So.
Am I wrong?
You wanna address that?
The rule doesn't say anything about how you have to proceed for putting people on committees.
But if he.
It merely says that the Town Council may establish and appoint members for such temporary town committees as are needed to help carry on the work of the town government. I haven't looked at the minutes or the recordings of the past, so I'm not sure what exactly the final motion in the past was. There's nothing in the rules that would preclude the action of appointing Mr. Connors directly to the committee.
Okay. But if you change it as a motion to open the floor for any Counsel member to serve, wouldn't you, by procedure, need to open the floor for nominations?
Not necessarily. In this case, it was made as a motion to appoint a particular person. If, I don't know that you have to nominate, I don't.
We're changing the rule.
I don't recall us, I don't recall any nominations for the Counsel member positions on any committees in the past. The nominations are typically for the resident members of committees, and there is a rule about that. When advised of potential vacancies on the boards and committees, the Counsel will direct the Town Manager to seek applications from interested residents. But those are in the positions on the committees, and some of this is a little confusing, because there's a history with committees at one point that had lists in the rules, but those lists are not there anymore. Those were abolished, and then there was more of a, just a normal procedural action to reestablish the committees without going through a change in the rules.
Well, we're changing the rule.
Well.
From what it was.
I'm a.
It was Mayor Pro Tem and Mayor.
But that was a policy decision, not a rule.
Well, it was, it was, it was a motion that was passed by this Counsel.
Has it, Ben, do you think it's been, by the motion and the vote, has it been effectively changed? Do we need to follow a different procedure?
I don't think you've changed the rule. I think you have effectively established that Mr. Connors is the co-chair of the committee.
Okay.
The rule, the rule of procedure, someone would need to make a motion to change the rule of procedure, and it doesn't have any reference to who is on what committee currently.
I'm not talking about that rule of procedure, I understand what you're, you're looking at, but we passed a motion back.
With regard to, with regard to policies.
With regard to policies.
With regard to policies, nothing binds you.
I understand.
And really, with regard to the rules, nothing technically binds you, you could make the same vote and change the rule if the rule had said that. But with regard to pass motions to put particular people on a body, you can change that by current, by having a new motion to put those people on, and if the body, as a body, votes in the majority to do that, then I think you've changed that, just as if it was a rule, or a policy, or whatever you would change. I mean, I think you could now make a motion to, I think it's a little different, because Mr., Mr. Newberry was coming off the board because he was not gonna be the Mayor Pro Tem anymore.
Right.
So it would be a little tricky now for you to make a motion to remove Mr. Connors and place somebody else on it, but assuming Mr. Connors was coming off the board, then you could do that. But Ben, I see Gary's point. My understanding of manager, Counsel, form of government, the Counsel, the entire Counsel, should have a say in who. The rule, the rule of procedure, someone would need to make a motion to change the rule of procedure. And it doesn't have any reference to who is on what committee currently.
I'm not talking about that rule of procedure. I understand what you're, you're looking at, but we passed a motion back-
With regard to, with regard to policies-
With regard to policy.
With regard to policies, nothing binds you-
I understand until you-
And really, with regard to the rules, nothing technically binds you. You could make the same vote and change the rule if the rule had said that. But with regard to pass motions to put particular people on a body, you can change that by current, by having a new motion to put those people on. And if the body, as a body, votes in the majority to do that, then I think you've changed that. Just as if it was a rule or a policy or whatever you would change. I mean, I think you could now make a motion to, uh, I think it's a little different, because Mr. Mr. Newberry was coming off the board, because he was not going to be the mayor pro tem anymore.
Right.
So it would be a little tricky now for you to make a motion to remove Mr. Connors and place somebody else on it. But assuming Mr. Connors was coming off the board, then you could do that.
But Ben, I see Gary's point. My understanding of manager council, uh, form of government, the council, the entire council, should have a say in who should be appointed to these committees. Now, I agree, we vote on Jim, and that's fine, but we never had the opportunity to nominate somebody else. So it's kind of, uh-
I don't know that there's any requirement that you be able to nominate other members of council for a particular-
I understand what you're saying.
Position. I mean, the, the board always acts by vote on a motion.
Yeah.
So I-
Right.
I don't know that you had to take nominations for the mayor pro tem either, but the mayor agreed to do that, and you went through that process. I, I don't think that, I don't think you have to take nominations for people to be put on committees. If someone on the council makes a motion and it passes with a three-two vote as to who's gonna be on the committee, I think that establishes who's on the committee, and that's what your rules tell you to do.
Yeah, but I tell you what, it, uh, it doesn't give other council members an opportunity to serve if they want to.
Well, it, the opportunity to be-
They're not even considered.
The opportunity to be blunt would be to make the motion before someone else made the motion.
I understand.
And that's-
That's the way it is, that's the way it is, unfortunately.
Okay.
There's a motion on the floor, and it's being considered, being talked about, to name Mr. Councilman Connors to serve as, as the committee's co-chair for the CIIP committee.
I think you've had a vote on that.
We voted on it.
We voted on it, and the vote was three-
It was voted, it was voted with a three-two vote, I thought.
There was never, the vote was not finished.
Okay, well, there was no, you did not ask for the negative votes.
There you go.
But you did, but you did get the three-
I mean, you did get a majority.
Well, that's gonna, you wanna go back and answer all of the opposed?
Well-
I'd be glad to do that.
No, I wouldn't make a motion. Can I make a motion now?
Well, do, do you want him to finish the voting?
Let's finish that vote, let's finish that vote. All opposed to Mr. Mr. Connors serving on the CIIP committee, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's two votes, and we have three votes, and Mr. Connors is beyond, so Mr. Mr. Connors is now on the committee.
Okay, I would make a motion that we follow the agenda as written.
And we haven't done that.
That's right.
Well, we're pretty close.
But you threw in a committee. And if we're gonna go out there, my motion, my second motion would be that we reestablish the planning, safety, and budget committees. In addition to the capital improvement committee.
Do I have a second to that?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I th, I think we need those committees. They were abolished, and something as important as a budget, I think it needs, uh, council representation on it and to, uh, to discuss it in more detail, rather than all being on the staff's responsibility. I think it's responsibility of the, uh, of the council to interact with the staff on it.
So what you're gonna ask to do is amend the rules of procedure to allow us to fast, establish, reestablish those three committees.
Made a motion to do that.
Right. Any further discussion?
And, in the, uh, air of working together, I think we should do that.
I think maybe it may be best handled at the next council meeting in January, so that all members of council can think of how that would work, how we would make appointments to that committee, and-
There's three committees, Mr. Connors.
Yeah, I got that.
Okay.
But, I mean, when we add new agenda items like that, it's very difficult for all council people to react to it without, um, without studying what's behind it.
And, and that's just what happened previously.
Yes, I asked that it be added to-
No, 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 no. We just went off agenda to nominate you to the capital improvement plan.
I, I don't agree with that, but anyway, I think that-
So it works for you, but it doesn't work for the other committees?
No, what he said was, he wanted us to lay that, that-
I understand, and I can, I can agree with that. That's why I said we need to stick to the agenda.
Alright, well, let's, let's-
Well, which motion was first, though?
We're off topic here.
To establish those committees.
Okay.
We're, we're off topic here. I mean, let's add that to next month's agenda. And stick with the agenda that we have here.
We have a motion and a second, so we have to move forward.
Okay, well, we're still in comment, is that correct?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay. Part of the reason that we abolished those was that, A, it's duplicative, staff's already doing that work. The second reason was, a, at the time, people, council members weren't showing up to the meetings. And so they were having less impact, because there were, that these meetings were happening, but they weren't getting any sort of impact, and they come back up to council again, we'd fight over it again. And so instead of having those committee-level meetings, we just said, let's just have it, let's just discuss it all here at the same time, um, and, and approach it that way. And, and that was the reason behind it, and, and so it wasn't, and frankly, most of them were very sparsely attended anyways by, by the public. So, um, hence the reason we, we got rid of them from the beginning. So I, I guess, I'm not, I don't really think we need them, personally.
I'm, I'm, I'm not opposed to the committees. I, I was very, very pleased to see the committees in place, uh, and would support the reestablishing of those committees. And I agree with what Jim says, let's bring it up for discussion again in January and reconsider it. And I have no issue with them, with, with having all of them back in place. I think it worked effectively for some period of time. It worked, uh, sometimes didn't work as well as we'd like for it to work, as Mr. Nation said. But I, I could live with that, the reestablishing of those committees, those, those four we had before. Well, three more than we have, than we have now. So could we table that for a January meeting and discuss it then? Your motion?
I'd like to go ahead and reestablish them. We got a motion and a second, and we're doing discussion. Why not just go ahead and vote on it?
I'll, I'll vote on it. I'll vote nay.
All in favor of reestablishing those committees tonight, those three we, we gave up on before, uh, indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Nay. So we're gonna delay the, we're gonna delay the establishment of those committees until sometime in January. And that, I'm glad to put it on the agenda for January. Thank you. Next thing on the agenda item, council, is the 2018 council meeting schedule. And I would propose that we adopt that meeting schedule with two exceptions, that we move the January 2nd meeting to January the 9th, as it follows a long holiday weekend. And move the July 3rd meeting to July the 10th, for the same reason, for the July. Any, any discussion about that? Any problem with it? Alright.
I do have, uh, issues with, uh, some of the other meetings down below.
The meetings down below?
Yeah, you have, uh, planning sessions with, uh, a joint meeting with the Southern Shores Volunteer Fire Department Board of Directors, but yet there is no planning meeting for the town. I think that, uh, planning meeting for the town should be added. We have planning meetings for the budgets, but how can we have a budget meeting without a plan? And that's where I think we should have a planning meeting.
You wanna make a motion to do that?
Yeah, I'd like to-
And what day, what day would you like to put, do that, meeting?
I didn't hear that. Could you repeat that, I'm sorry, Fred?
I said, uh, we have a planning meeting with, uh, Southern Shores Volunteer Fire Department Board of Directors.
We do.
And we have planning meetings for the budget, but we don't have a planning meeting to develop a plan for the town. And I don't see how we can develop a budget without a plan. So my motion is, I would like to add one additional, um, working, uh, me, meeting for, uh, for developing a town plan. Now, dates, um, flexible, all that. I would assume we would want to do it before we have our budget planning meeting. So I would say sometimes, uh, probably in, uh, in February or late January, we should have a planning meeting.
Is it a budget planning meeting you're thinking?
No, no, thing about a plan.
What specifically do you want planned, Fred? Now, I think I knew exactly-
Well, don't you recall, uh, two years ago, we had a session where we developed a strategic plan? We had a, um, facilitator come in, and we, uh, went through a long series of discussions, and we came up with a plan that we did nothing with. And if we're, if we're gonna, we can either resurrect that plan and modify it, or scrap it and start over, doesn't matter to me, as long as we have some kind of plan and a budget that supports the plan. But developing a budget without a plan does not make a lot of sense.
But, isn't the, doesn't the budget, doesn't the budget set priorities? I mean, isn't that budget meeting about setting the priorities and the planning?
No.
Well, I think, I think the plan-
Going for the future year.
Well, we've had this discussion numerous times before, the plan should drive the budget. We shouldn't back into a plan from the budget, we should have a plan that is supported by a budget. Now, that plan may be, hey, we're gonna fix X number of roads, we're going to put in a bike path, we're gonna do this and do that, and that's fine, whatever we agree on. But we don't have a meeting to have that discussion, to integrate all of those projects or plans together. And we should be looking beyond just the physical year that we're budgeting for. We should be looking farther out as well. So that in future years, we go back and modify that plan if we need to, add to it or delete, and then subsequent, uh, budget planning sessions will support that plan. But right now, we don't have a plan, so how can we?
What if, what if we were to, on the March 20th and the April 16th meetings, the, the text reads work session for annual budget planning. Why don't we just say work session for annual budget and planning? And make it for both of them, and we can discuss planning and budget, because budget is important to planning. So we, we've got the meetings, we can do it at the same time.
Budget, budget supports plans.
That's fine, we can discuss planning too, there, I, I hear what you're saying.
Sounds to me like we're taking the budget and backing into a plan, and it should be the other way around.
The way it sounds like of what we do there, it'll be up to us.
Right.
We can, we can control that.
Well, and Tom, you, you listed some things when you spoke a minute ago.
I just gotta mention that.
You, you listed the walking path, fire department, beach nourishment, et cetera. And we need to, as a council, sit down and put a plan together, okay, which, what are we gonna do first? And where are we going, because we can't do it all in the, in one year.
That's right.
And, um, we started that process, but we kinda dropped it. And I'd like to see us go back to doing that. And it's kinda like, okay, when we did the capital improvement, uh, the roads this year, we had a list of roads, we had no priority on them. So we reestablished capital improvement plan, planning committee. So putting something together and having those groups bring those things to us for a planning session, prioritizing for the town for this year, and maybe looking forward to next year, and maybe even the year after that, like, if you're gonna start East Dogwood, for example, and, and look at the paths. If you're gonna do East Dogwood, when are you gonna finish up the next side? Chris and I have talked about that. It's, it needs to be 2017, 2018, 2018, 19? When are we gonna do this? When are we gonna do this road? And instead of just a list of roads, and they need to be fixed.
Will we prioritize the roads through, through that, through our, either the staff planning or through-
But we didn't, but if you remember, this past summer, it was like, pick one. There's no priority to it. That was stated. We asked that.
Can this discussion not be had in the context of our, what we asked to add to the January agenda for planning?
Well, no, we're trying to approve, uh, our plant, our, our council meetings for next year, and Fred wants to add a planning session.
And I agree with that, but I think we're, you know, we're trying to schedule a meeting before we've kind of really had a chance to form up a committee and start talking about all this.
I thought Chris's idea was a good one, and we do, just combine a, a planning meeting with a budget, our first budget meeting.
Because they're related. Just say and, budget and planning. That way we can discuss both, because obviously budget affects planning, and planning affects budget, they, they work with each other.
Yeah, but the thing is, that's a tactical approach. I'm thinking more of a strategic approach. In other words, we need to not only think short-term, which, you know, our budget will support, but we need to look further out as well.
Most of the things on my list, Fred, were, were further out. Most of that list I've ever, when I first made my, my opening statements, were further out. They were things that were gonna happen way down the road, possibly three and five years, beach nourishment. Path on South Dogwood could be two or three or four years away.
And, and nothing stops us from discussing it. I mean, nothing stops us from discussing long-term planning at any of those meetings. I think they're important, it's fairly important to, to build that into the budget model for, for numerous years.
I don't think you're seeing a lot of that.
About a land use plan, which ties into one more thing, we could, we should be considering for the future. So I, I think we're willing to address these things, but I see, there's seen a wrong, nothing wrong with addressing them in a, in a, you know, dual role.
Well, let me-
Budget meeting and a, and a planning meeting.
Let, let me throw a curveball on Chris's. Why don't we look at the Tuesday, February 20th as a planning session and take off the joint planning, invite the fire department board of directors to be a part of that, have a specific time on the agenda for them, and then we discuss bike paths, roads, et cetera. And that get, that puts us ahead of the work session, and actually, that fire department's one of the big issues that we need to, uh, be addressing this year. And it's gonna be a, we need to, we need to want, know what our priorities are before we go into that budget session, is my opinion.
I see the need for planning and everything, but I don't wanna cripple ourselves along the way for what, what we need to be marching on with right now. I'm all for planning, but we need to go ahead and, um, and have this meeting with the fire department and-
I said invite them.
Yeah, I, I, and I get the concept of one driving the other, but, you know, I don't think we need to start changing dates or anything right now. I, I like Chris's idea also about incorporating one of the meetings into two.
Well, we, we do that if we combine the fire department meeting with the, with the, with the planning session.
How long, how much time are you gonna allow for these meetings? Is, is it gonna be, uh, all day if we need to?
The way, the way it's going right now, we're probably looking at seven, eight hours.
If you want to also.
I'm not opposed to making it all day.
Okay.
We split it in two different-
Well, how about this, I, I, Gary's got onto something, that, that the fire department is long, is a long-term planning item, because we're gonna lock ourselves into it.
Right, yes.
It's a nine o'clock AM meeting. So what we do is we just plan on being there all day, we can add, we can add a long-term planning, does that, does that work? Strategic session, which is gonna relate to the fire department, because that's gonna be a big budget item.
I, I don't care how we do it, as long as we do it. That's my point.
Would you be comfortable with that?
I, I can live with that.
Yeah, I'm good.
Have, have, have lunch, and go on.
Have lunch, yeah, have a break.
One more, one more change on your dates. And I don't care which one, but Tuesday, September 4th is the day after Labor Day. Some people travel and extend it.
That's not a, that's not a problem.
It's not a problem. Could we move that one either to the 5th or the 11th, and I don't have a preference, and?
That's September?
Yes.
September 11th, okay.
5th or the 11th, 5th's like Wednesday, and people will be back. And, and the reason I say that is, you know, you, you get, when you back them up a week, then everything gets backed up a week.
What's your, what's your pleasure, council, the 5th or the 11th?
I don't care.
Any thought?
I'll go with either one.
Well, I gotta have something a little more definitive than that. Does the 5th sound okay to you?
Yes.
Let's make it for the 5th, then.
Okay.
Thank you. That's just by consent, we're gonna have our September meeting on, on the 5th, instead of on the, uh, whatever the other date was, that 3rd or something.
And the 3rd's gonna be the 10th, and January 2nd's gonna be January 9th.
Right. Item C under, under paragraph four, Dare County, Dare and County and Regional Council Committee Appointments.
Um, Mr. Mayor.
You gotta adopt that.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I believe y'all need to vote on that, um, you need to vote on the meeting schedule, that's something we do need to have.
Alright. So, council?
Motion to approve as amended.
Motion to approve the meeting schedule as amended, right?
Right.
Alright. Do I have a second?
Second, I'm sorry, what is the motion?
A motion to, to approve the meeting schedule as amended with those three dates that we changed.
Okay.
And, and the planning session.
And a planning session, uh, in, was it February?
Uh, February 20th.
20th, February 20th.
Same date. No change in the date.
Be a planning session.
Per Chris.
Do I have a motion to approve that? I asked for that.
I'll make that motion.
Alright. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, thank you. Moving ahead here, let's go back to the county and regional council committee appointments. Dare County Tourism Board of Directors, three nominees required. We would, we, in the past, have given one nominee, and they've asked us for two more, so I wanna try to avoid that this year.
I nominate Chris. Councilman Nason to that board.
Thank you, I would like to also, as, as altern, as alternatives for the county to consider, council member Connors and myself as, as a second and third consideration for the, for Dare County Tourism Board to consider. Unless someone else like, would like to do that. I'd pull myself off if someone else wants to, wants to be on that board. I'm good with Chris and-
I was thinking about maybe Gary.
That's really up to Gary, if he, if you wanna serve on that, it'd be, it'd be the third nominee, which you can be.
He kills me, you open nominations, Tom.
Right.
And I nominated Chris.
Right, and that's, and that's where we are, and I, I said-
Well, you said you need three, according to your agenda, you need three nominations.
Right, and I'm, and I'm-
So we need three nominations from the council.
I just offered two others, I offered, I offered-
Okay. Now, is there any more?
Jim and myself.
And then Fred?
And then Fred offered up.
I would serve on it if, if we need an alternate, you put my name as an alternate.
And I too would serve on.
Well, you're, you're on there as the primary already.
Okay.
Now, what else do you have, we have to do with that?
We have to vote on three, we have to vote on-
Can we vote on the three of that?
And there's four.
Yeah.
Right, there's four?
No, there's only three, there's three nominees, unless you wanna add, do you wanna add Mr. McDonald that list?
Fred nominated me.
Well, I'll, I'll pull myself off that list, if that's the case.
I nominate Gary.
There's no point in giving them four nominees, if they're not gonna take them.
Okay.
So, all in favor of having Mr. Nason, Mr. Connors, and Mr. McDonald be the three, the three people that we've proposed for the, to the tourism bureau for consideration. Signified by saying yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. So our primary is, is Chris, Mr. Nason, our secondary is Jim, Mr. Connors, and our, and our third candidate is, is, is Councilman McDonald. I'll ask Mr. Mr. Newberry if you wish to continue to serve on the Dare County Government Access Channel.
Yeah, I'll do it.
Would anyone else like to have that job?
Would there be any other nom, any other nominees?
We don't have any nominees, if, if he, he'll take the job, and he's happy, I don't, I don't see any need to call for a nominee.
I support Fred.
All in favor of Mr. Mr. Newberry keeping that job for the government channel?
Aye.
All right, that's just by consensus, you need, you need a motion on that, Peter, or?
We have consensus of everybody, we have consensus.
Okay, that's it, here then. The last one on this is, is to serve as, as an elected representative of the ARPO, and ask for approval about my, my motion to do so. I would, once again, offer to serve as a, as a representative of the ARPO, and, and would ask your approval for me to do that.
Do you, do you need a motion to nominate?
Do we have any other nominees?
I've already made a motion, my motion is that, that you approve my, me serving on that, on that ARPO committee.
Then I'll second that motion.
It's not a motion, it's a nomination.
It's a nomination, and I'm asking if you can accept that as me being on that committee, on that, serving as, as a representative to that organization.
I nominate Mr. Connors to serve on that committee.
Okay, but I think Tom is the better person. Do I have to accept that one?
No, you don't, we can go back and make a motion, discussion, we can put, goes through the whole process.
I'll accept it if we're voting on it.
So, all in favor of Mr. Connors serving on the ARPO committee?
Well, yours was the first one, let's do yours first.
Let's do me first, all in favor of the mayor serving on the, as ARPO rep, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All in favor of Mr. Connors serving on that?
You don't have to do it.
You don't have to.
You have a majority vote, right? That's the end of it, I'm, I will serve as your ARPO rep, thank you.
Thank you, I wasn't looking forward to voting against myself.
Staff reports, town planner? Hi Wes, good evening.
Thank you, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I have a brief report for y'all tonight for the month of November. There were nine zoning permits issued, 31 building permits issued, those consisted of four new single-family dwellings, one remodel, two repairs, one repair remodel, two additions, two addition remodels, and 19 others. There are currently 27 single-family dwellings under construction in the town, and the total amount of fees collected in November was $20,872.50. With respect to the town planning board, there will be a meeting on December the 18th, and the board will consider ZTA 1706, which is a zoning tax amendment application to amend the town's current lot disturbance and stormwater management ordinance as directed by council when they address the critical topics in the town code update project. Any questions?
Any questions, council? Thank you, Wes.
Thank you.
David Cole, good evening, David.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. The Southern Shores Police Department report for November 2017. Officers responded to 1,750 calls for service for the month. You can see some of the breakdowns in the pie chart. As far as actual incidents or crimes that were reported for November, we had 29 of those. Under arrest, we had 14 criminal arrests.
Tally-ho.
I thought there was a boat gonna dock over here or something. As far as written citations, officers made 74 traffic stops for the month of November. Out of those 74 stops, they, they handed out 19 written citations and another 20 warning citations. And we had one parking and a right-of-way ordinance violation. Questions, comments? Chris?
The business checks are awfully high, is that, is that normal?
It is, but we weren't counting, and that's part of the reason you're, you're gonna see the more accurate calls for service. The officers get out two or three times during the shift, especially over the midnight shift. And all they were doing is taking credit for food line when they're actually going and checking every physical door.
Okay.
They deserve the credit for what they're actually doing, so that's why you see those much higher now.
But it might, it might be the same trip within-
That's correct, yes.
Do y'all check doors on other non-businesses, like the church?
Yes.
Okay.
Church, the restaurants, yes.
Okay.
Duckwoods Country Club, those types of places, yes. Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you, David. Ed Limbacher, Fire Chief, good evening, Ed.
Good evening, everybody. Fire department report for November. Fire department filed into a total of 36 calls. One cooking fire, one patient assist, 24 EMS calls, a gas leak, a chemical hazard, three public service, two authorized burnings, controlled burns, one odor of smoke, one fire alarm, and one citizen complaint, for a total of 36.
Anybody have any questions? Any questions? No. Thank you, Ed.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Town management report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, members of the council. First item I'm gonna report tonight is to remind her that the regional and district biologists for the Wildlife Resources Commission will be putting on a coyote conflict management seminar here in the Pitt Center tomorrow afternoon at 6:00. It'll last until 7:30, and there'll be two biologists here that will go over features of the coyote population in Dare County, especially on the Outer Banks. I did wanna report to the council, two meetings ago, you directed a traffic, the staff explore with traffic consultants, a appearance in front of you. We did, as directed, discuss with several traffic consultants, all of them are familiar with the problem that we were referred to. They're, they're familiar with the specific problem here in Southern Shores. I will say to you that none of them would like to come and conduct a forum. I'll just be blunt with that, they do not want a, a forum-type atmosphere when they come, and they feel like they want to consult with the council. And it would cost us some money to do that, if they came in that capacity to give a proposal as to what they would do. They are familiar with what council has discussed already. The items that they would propose would not be much different than what council has discussed, so each of them expressed that as a reservation as well. With that, I would propose to you that unless you direct me, otherwise, I'll have some more definitive pricing for you in the first of your planning sessions, to go with that as a potential expense for next, for the budget beginning in, in June, or the end of June. Or, we can discuss an amendment for this year as well. But I would like to be able to talk to them some more and give you some more definitive pricing, but I swear am with that. The beach profile survey, the field work has been completed. I talked to the coastal engineers today with that, they propose at this point that they possibly could come in March and give the council a presentation on their findings and conclusions from that survey. I did wanna report to you as well that springing on the beach hopefully will begin next week. As temperatures have dropped, we would, our contractor is ready to go, we thought he would start this week, but it'll probably be next week. The Yopon Trail KAMA major permit is still anticipated to be received in the next, hopefully in the next month. With that, we would hopefully have something to put out for bid in this particular fiscal year, dealing with Yopon Trail. And the projection would be that it would be in the form of bulkhead, the bulkhead expansion portion of that, of that project could hopefully be put out during this fiscal year. Also, just to update you again, as I've been doing via email, the Palmetto Lane project, as you know, you approved that, that's under contract. The Clamshell project will be out for bid in January, and of course, you will consider your Skyline Road project tonight. The plantings for East Dogwood Trail and NC Highway 12 stormwater infiltration area were scheduled to begin today as temperatures have dropped, and of course, it's starting raining, and our contractor advises that hopefully he'll begin as soon as it stops raining. So hopefully, it'll be this week when it'll begin its late installing shrubs and plantings at that location. I'll be glad to try to answer any operation questions the council may have.
Any questions, council?
Just one question. How much was it that the grant money was for?
$119, no, excuse me, $119,000.
Thank you, that second figure sounds better.
Yes, excuse me.
Ed?
I don't have anything to report, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Just have a general public comment. Thank you, Bonnie. Karen Brown, good evening, Karen. Good to see you again.
Good evening, thanks for the opportunity to be here. I'm here representing the Outer Banks Chamber of Commerce, I'm Karen Brown, the president and CEO. I feel like this is right in my eyes. So I'm here representing the chamber as well as our newly-formed Community Housing Initiative group that we have currently working at the chamber. The Outer Banks Chamber of Commerce is speaking in support of zoning tax amendment, ZTA 17-05, accessory structures with living space. The Outer Banks is facing a crisis in community housing availability for our year-round as well as seasonal workforce. This crisis is evident in the lack of qualified workers to fill vacant jobs in our region. Accessory dwellings are an ideal solution for many communities as it allows for the creation of smaller, modestly-priced housing units for our workforce while preserving the character of the surrounding community. Several benefits of accessory dwellings include the following. Promotes workforce housing at a small scale, provides workforce housing at no expense to the public, establishes conveniently-located rental housing for the local workforce, allows opportunities for extended families to live together, older and younger, offers companionship and assistance for older and less mobile, mobile citizens, provides additional income for property owners, offers modest increases in properties, property sales and occupancy tax revenues for the community, and creates the potential for more year-round residents, increasing the vitality of the town, and improving public safety by having more eyes in neighborhoods. This zoning tax amendment is one small step that may help in alleviating some of that shortfall in the housing community. The chamber is working side by side with a number of organizations, business owners, business members, and concerned citizens on this issue, and will be reaching out to you in the near future to engage in a conversation with all of our towns and the counties involved. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Thanks, Karen. At this time, I'll close public comment, and I'll ask, under old business, that the land use plan update proposal per tab three in your book, council. I think that's Mr. Holland to make his presentation to us. Good evening.
Good evening, we very much appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening. I have with me Landon Holland, he is a senior planner with Holland Consulting Planners. Pardon me, I'm waiting for the-
Oh, that's all right.
This one. Yeah, okay, thank you. I appreciate that. We, we realize that there are a lot of folks out there that you could have granted the opportunity for the interview this evening, and we are honored to be here to talk with you. I have a brief presentation, and then we will be happy to try to answer your questions. Holland Consulting Planners has been in business since 1987. Our home office is in Wilmington, North Carolina, we have an office in Washington, North Carolina. We, well, all of the people, beg your pardon, that would be working on this project would be working with you from the Wilmington office. I will be the principal contact. Throughout the process, I will be at most of the meetings, if I'm not here, Landon will be at the meetings. And Landon has 20 years of experience in the planning field. I have worked as a planning consultant in eastern North Carolina for the last 45 years. So I think we, we have had a long-term exposure experience in eastern North Carolina. We have done 83 KAMA land use plans. All but one of those plans have been certified by the Coastal Resources Commission and been through KAMA and state review. The one plan that has not been certified is currently under review, and that would be Carolina Shores down on the North Carolina, South Carolina border. All of the people that will work with you or for you are full-time employees of Holland Consulting Planners. There will be no subcontractors on this job if we have the opportunity to work with them. We have a, a high level of notoriety, if you pardon me for that adjective. We, we're recognized in North Carolina in 2010, in 2014, we won North Carolina Planning Association Awards for comprehensive plans that, that we have prepared. And within our staff in the Wilmington office, we have four AICP planners. And if you're not familiar with- And if you're not familiar with that term, North Carolina, or actually, there's only one state in the United States that licensed planners. North Carolina doesn't. But the professional standard that's accepted across the country is what's called American Institute of Certified Planners, which is certification by the APA. So we have four planners, only two of us being Landon and I would be working on the project, but we have backup in the Wilmington office for two other certified planners. Our organizational chart is fairly simple. Landon will supervise the GIS component of this project. And GIS, computerized mapping and graphics for the plan is extremely important because if, when we produce a plan these days, it's important not only what the plan says, but it's important what it looks like and graphically, how clear it is and how well it's presented. Because if people aren't interested in the appearance of the plan, more often than not, they're not going to pick it up and read it. And it's extremely important that if you have spent the money you're about to spend and we go through the process, that people are going to look at it and pay attention to it. So graphics are just as important sometimes in terms of public involvement as the substance and the content of the plan is. The most important thing I think I'm going to say to you tonight deals with the subject of citizen participation. This is your plan. It's not Holland, will not be Holland Consulting Planner's plan. We have to have effective, continuous, and widespread citizen participation. If we don't, we'll give you a document that you won't pay any attention to, and it will not be implemented. So it's extremely important that we have citizen participation in this process. Years ago, I used to look at citizen participation as my worst enemy. Well, I don't feel that, that way anymore. I have learned the hard way. If we don't have people engaged, we will not have a plan that is of any value to the town of Southern Shores. So to accomplish that, we propose the following process, that we start this process by conducting 15 interviews with stakeholders that are recommended to us by the town. People who are very positive about the town and people who may be a bit negative about the town. We want to see both sides of the fence. And we will take that initial input plus input from the town staff, and we will structure a citizen survey. We will use a dedicated project website to post and distribute that survey, as well as making hard copy, paper copies of the survey available for the, for the project. I mentioned the website. Everything that we will do during the course of this project will be posted on that website. Planning board minutes, planning board notices, all town meeting notices, everything that is done in this process will be posted on that website, including sections of the plan as the plan is developed. We want this to be as transparent as we can make it. It will be an interactive website so that if people are reading sections of the plan as they are developed, they can post their comments and remarks on the plan as it is being developed. We have proposed five work sessions to go through the development of the plan, those sessions with the planning board and one with, with the town council. The town council work sessions may require more than, may require a couple of meetings, and we're okay with that. If we have to go to two meetings with, with you folks, we're not going to come back and ask you for a contract amendment for one or two more meetings. But four meetings committed with the planning board to go through the, the process. Excuse me. For the members of the public that hear, this process will work with us going through the development of the plan with the planning board. It will then leave the planning board and come to the town council. And once the town council is satisfied with it, then we will ultimately go to a, a public hearing. In addition to the items I just mentioned, if necessary or as needed, we will use extended options on social media. We will have sign-up sheets in town hall so that anybody that gives us their email address will be notified of all planning board meetings in which the plan will be discussed. We will send email notices directly to civic groups that have notified us or that the town has advised us of their interest. And we will place copies of the hard copies of the municipal plan in, the comprehensive plan in the municipal building for people to review or check out. Plus, the plan that is posted on the website will be downloadable to anyone who has a computer, a printer connected to their computer. Our intended deadline to deliver the plan to you would be December of next year, 2018. We could expedite that schedule, but we don't recommend it because we think if we get much shorter than 10 to 12 months, we're going to diminish the opportunity for public input, questioning, and comment as, as we go through the process. Once we deliver the plan to the, to the board, you will then have to authorize us to submit it to the Division of Coastal Management, your division planner, which is Charlotte Owens in Elizabeth City. And the plan will first go through what we call the state cause consistency review. And Charlene will do the consistency review to make sure that she at the staff level is satisfied that we have addressed all the 7B KAMA requirements for producing a KAMA-certified land use plan. Once she has basically signed off on the plan, it will go through state review to an endless number of state agencies that will make sure they have no further comments on the plan. That will take 75 days. So basically, you're looking at a public hearing. It would probably take place in sometime March or April of 2019. I know that sounds like a really long time, and it is, but that's what the process requires. Even if we move the planning preparation process up to 10 months, for example, we're still going to be in 2019 before you would ever be able to go to a public hearing. Because if you want KAMA certification, you can't go to the public hearing until we have all the state agencies sign off on it. That usually doesn't take any more than 75 days. The last several plans that were submitted to the state that we'd have done by, for review and comment, we didn't have any comments. So that's, Charlene's very thorough. Once it goes past Charlene's desk, it's usually smooth sailing from that, that point on. We would certainly intend to address all the 7B planning requirements. And I'd like to make one observation about those planning requirements. If any of you were involved when you did your last plan in 2012, that the planning guidelines, the 7B guidelines have changed. They're much more friendly. They're much easier to work with. They give you the town or the county, if one's involved, a lot more flexibility to express your opinions without having to just rubber stamp a list of things that you have to look at. There's still things you have to look at. You have to address all the 7H minimum use standards that are in effect in the coastal management program. But you have a lot more flexibility. And as a planner, planning consultant, I'm a lot happier with what we're dealing with now than what we were dealing with before the new guidelines came into effect in February year, two years ago, in February 15, that the new guidelines came into effect. And I think if you look at where we're going with this, you become versed in those, you'll be a lot happier with them as well. I know some of the issues that you had in your 2012 plan. I have reviewed the plan. I'd be happy to talk with you about those, but you know what those issues are. We certainly intend to update and review those and use the 2012 plan as a springboard to, to move into the new plan. But I'm going to stop with that because I'm more interested in answering any questions that you folks may have of us. And Landon may answer some of these, and I may answer some of them if you have any, any questions.
Counsel, any questions? I have a question that, I'm sorry, you have another one?
Go ahead.
I have a question, just confirming the timeframe. You, you're going to need a year to 15 months.
No more than 12 months. I said 12, possibly 10. The schedule depends on how quickly, to some degree, the schedule depends on how quickly your planning board moves through this. Because we will write this plan in sections. We'll deal with existing conditions, future conditions, and goals, policies, and implementing strategies. Usually, the thing that takes the most time for the planning board or you folks to be comfortable with is going to be goals, strategies, and implementing actions. If they move through that quickly and they're satisfied with what we've given them or given you, then it can move faster. But I really don't see it going any faster than 10 months or at absolute best, nine months. Because I want people to be comfortable with what we're asking them to adopt. And I, we will never give the planning board or you anything and ask you to act on it or discuss it if you haven't had it in advance. So it, it takes some review time because there's a lot of data that goes into a KAMA land use plan or a comprehensive plan.
My next question, I want, I'm going to direct to our town planner and also to our planning board chair back there. They know their schedule better than I do. Right now, they're heavily involved in a code rewrite for our town. Is there, is there any possibility we can superimpose that, this KAMA land use plan on what they're doing right now and at this time? Or should we, or should we look at, look at this as a, as a few months down the road? I don't know what the, I know the, the code rewrite's taking, going to take some time. And I, I need, I need your, your input, Wes, and I think Sam's input to give, give us some thought about, or some idea of what we, we should expect, to expect. When do you want to take this on, I guess is the question?
Excuse me. As far as the planning board goes, we can deal with these early sort of things, the meetings and, and public hearings, you know, broadly easy. And it's just a matter of when we get the information. If you expect a two-week turnaround, it depends on what else we have on our plate at the time. And, yeah, I think that whenever we get started, we'll get started.
Okay. Thank you, Sam.
Mayor, if you told us to start tonight, which I understand you're not, but whenever you tell us to start, it's going to take us about three months to have the first sections ready to hand to the planning board. So that three months built into that 10 to 12 months that I mentioned.
So you're looking at a initial phase, three months out before, from when we start or approve it to, before it would even be anything coming back to, that would need to go to the planning board?
To the planning board. And if we would, we do our interviews, we collect a lot of data on existing conditions, we get a survey constructed, and then we go to the planning board. Because the survey I mentioned, we're not going to post the survey on the website until both the planning board and you folks have seen that questionnaire or that survey. We, we will not do anything that's exposed to the public unless the town has seen it first.
Can you speak to the legality of, well, let me refer, let me start over. A town the size of Southern Shores, are we legally required to have an updated KAMA land use plan and have it updated during a certain timeframe or every, on a certain cycle?
Well, that's a good question, and it's a complicated question. So there's no, no simple answer here. The answer is, do you have a drop-dead date by which you have to have an updated plan? No, you don't.
Actually, the question is more germane. Is there, do, must we have a KAMA land use plan to begin with? And if so, is there a, a legal requirement to have it updated every certain number of years?
Well, I'm sorry, I was going to get to, to that point, but you are not mandated to have a KAMA land use plan. But if you, as a town, do not have your own KAMA land use plan, you will fall under the purview of the Dare County KAMA land use plan.
Okay.
Right now, you have a KAMA-certified land use plan. It was certified in August of 2012. The problem therein lies is that there are legitimately a lot of policies and strategies in the Dare County plan that may not be the policies and strategies that the town of Carolina, or Southern Shores, like, would like to have. The significant thing about a KAMA land use plan is that I mentioned 7H. In 7H, the KAMA actual guidelines for number of land uses such as marinas and what can happen in an eastern shoreline are the minimum standards that the state of North Carolina will accept for KAMA permitting. Somebody wants to get a commercial marina permitted, they have to meet the 7H guidelines. And I'm going to give you just one example of, of what I'm talking about. The, the KAMA guidelines consider anything more than nine slips in a marina as a commercial marina. If Southern Shores wants to consider anything more than five slips a commercial marina, then the KAMA permits have to be issued consistent with your local guidelines and policies which might exceed the 7H use standard. So it can be, depending upon your local preferences, a significant thing. Normally, in North Carolina, land use plans don't have any, they're, they're an objective. They're a goal. They don't have any binding ties, you will. But with respect to KAMA land use plans, if you have policies that exceed, they're more restrictive than the 7H state guidelines, then the KAMA permitting people have to follow the policies in that plan. Now, there is no automatic date by which you have to update a land use plan, a KAMA Now, there is no automatic date by which you have to update a land use plan, a KAMA land use plan. In years past, they were all normally on a five-year schedule. But in those days, the state of North Carolina was funding the updates every five years. State doesn't do that anymore, not routinely. There are few every year that get funded, but not many. So what happens is, is that if you, the town, is applying for state or federal funds, the funding agency will review your grant application for what's called plan consistency. And if you have a difference of opinion from what is in your current Camel Land Use Plan, the 2012 plan, that's what the state or the federal government's going to look at for consistency review. So I can't answer that question unless the town tells me that you've got a change in policy or attitude, and we want to change what that plan says for consistency review. And I would suspect that, looking at your 2012 plan, there might be, I can't say that there are, there might be some things that you'd want to consider updating or changing. So I'm sorry for that rambling answer.
No, that's good, though. It puts it in perspective to me, because I was aware that there weren't any real legal requirements that we weren't, that we're working under. But your answer explained the benefits of going ahead and having an updated one.
Well, there's one other thing dealing with the land use plan which doesn't relate to KAMA. And that is that in 2005, the state of North Carolina, our legislature passed a piece of legislation that says, says all zoning decisions that are made by local government must be consistent with your land use plan, or you must explain why you are acting inconsistent with the plan. And there's a second item that is in the state statutes that says that all zoning ordinances must be based on a current comprehensive plan. It's arguable whether 2012 is or isn't a comprehensive plan. I'm not prepared to answer that. That's left to the judges and the attorneys. But you are getting somewhat dated with your plan. So there's two things, KAMA requirement and the general statutory requirements on a land use plan.
Any questions, counsel?
I just had a quick question. How, if at all, do the new proposed FEMA maps tie into or not tie into this KAMA land use plan? Is there any sort of connection with that or not?
I'm sorry.
The new FEMA maps?
Flood.
They're proposed at this point.
We will, we certainly will coordinate the plan with the FEMA maps. We're dealing with that everywhere we're working on KAMA and non-KAMA land use plans. Is there anything you can say?
I would say that we run into this quite a bit, and we look at it as a, we have one of those sort of less mapping programs in the country. So when we go through these processes, we work generally, we try and work what's on the books at the time, if we're close, formal adoption of the new maps.
Right.
And the planning board advises us to, hey, we don't have a lot of appeals on this or any appeals, we're comfortable with the mapping, we can go ahead and utilize that, those draft maps during the planning process. If there is some question as to whether there will be appeals that go through and are changing, we would simply revisit the data and analysis associated with those maps at that point in time, so we can start with what's on the books and then change the plan once the map is out or formally placed.
Well, and that's why I ask, because right now, we've got, we're in a period where the maps have been, they're out for public comment. We could see there's going to be some rather dramatic changes to this area in particular. So I'm reticent, I guess, I guess I'm wondering, do you wait for those to be adopted? Do you start the things you can start that don't, that are not affected, the boilerplate items?
Generally speaking, we, you know, if there is a lot of concern about change in the maps that are being proposed, there's changes that are in the offing, so to speak, we would generally start, my recommendation would be starting with what's on the books, what is in place currently. During the planning process, we just hope that those new maps are formalized, and then we can go back and revisit that data set at that point in time, so that the adopted plan will reflect.
Right.
A land use plan is a work in progress. If we started today, by the time we get 10 months down the road and we get ready to ask you to act on or adopt something, there are going to be things that have changed that we're going to have to back up and change. We expect that. Plus, with respect to flood maps and mitigation planning, we are required under the 7B guidelines to make sure that the plan, whatever your plan is, is consistent with the adopted hazard mitigation plan. And right now, Dare County and Southern Shores, you're all under one regional hazard mitigation plan. We did every hazard mitigation plan east of I-95 in this last cycle, except for the one plan that includes Dare County. And we have to make sure we're consistent with that plan.
Okay.
Which does impact the flood maps.
Oh, surely.
Any further questions, counsel? Thank you, Ms. Hall. Appreciate it.
Thank you very, very much for the opportunity. And regardless of your decision, I hope your project goes very, very well.
Thank you. We'll be in touch, too. Thanks very much for coming in. Has Wes calling to get the gentleman in focus?
Yes.
We have one more presenter who's going to talk about a plan, the same thing Camel Land Use Plan for us. This was following counsel's request that we bring in two, two people to consult with Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, Ms. Resko and those in the audience. It's good to be here tonight. My name is Bob Clark. I'm the vice president for Planning Services for Infocus Planning and Design. Our main office is in Kannapolis, North Carolina. We've been a firm for, in this capacity, doing specifically and only local government services since early 2009. The CEO of our company, Richard Flo, is a, started this type of process in another life and I worked with his previous company for eight years prior to that. So we've had a fairly long relationship. The model that this company has taken in terms of its approach to local government services actually started in the late 80s. And it basically involves a combination of looking for planning and how that informs other decisions in local government, and also including implementation, which includes a large component of actually staffing under contract, many of the services that are actually identified in the plans that are produced. I think you have a copy of our overall proposal, and I'm sure you've had a chance to look through that. And I'll refer to that, we're going along in a few places, but not certainly going to read that to you tonight. I'm also basically a town planner, different titles, master planner, I think is the most recent one, but I'm a community planner. We have a little over 20 folks in our firm, and they range from town managers to public works to landscape architect, planners, as well as code enforcement officers. So pretty much, if you were to step back and think about that, pretty much everybody in our firm, we can almost pick up that same proof and put it in pretty much any city and be a complete department or operational side of many, many functions in local government. We think this is important to how to listen and understand the differences and needs for Southern Shores and other communities that we work with. But we also, it gives us maybe some insight in terms of how to live with a plan once they're done. They're not done. They're a living document. We think they need to be a living document, something that doesn't have really a sunset on them, and every year needs to be revisited from time to time, or at least every two years at a minimum in our, in our experience. Where we, regardless of whatever expectations or mandates, is that it's kind of built into the thinking process so that as you have citizens come to you and they're asking about different elements of that plan, or maybe big projects or things that you might have out there in the horizon, what's our status, that there's kind of an ongoing monitoring and update process. So it's five years or 10 years is really, in many ways, too long, because cities and towns are dynamic. And part of that is the opportunity to look at the bigger picture. The terminology that's used here is a land use plan update or a land use plan. If I can take just a moment to briefly mention that the, there are different terminologies for plans. Comprehensive plans, land use plans, strategic plans. There are capital improvements plans, and you have a host of different types of plans that this town's already adopted and that are in the region and your neighbors. What we're primarily speaking about tonight with this is, one, a response to a need we would anticipate to update your previous Camel Land Use Plan and have that meet your needs and also be certified by the Coastal Resource Commission. And the other is, is the opportunity to use this vehicle of expectation and maybe having that done, do you really think about this as your comprehensive plan? There are some elements of that. Our view is that most of your major planned thinking should be incorporated into your plan. You can have a bicycle pedestrian master plan, you can have a stormwater master plan, we've done those. You can have a capital improvements program and budget process, we've done those. And they are important components. And your recent efforts, and I would commend the town for taking on the codification update. And not, a note, too small aside, I would just mention that one of the unique things I saw in that, and I know Chad Meadows and the Code Writers Group that are working with you all, and the process of gathering from the focal groups to the various citizen inputs, when I see 900 citizens participating in a code update, that tells me something about the involvement in community. So as we go through these, some people get tired of just, well, there's another plan, we're going to have another meeting, we're going to talk about the same thing we talked about 10 years ago in your 2006 to 2008 effort, and certainly got certified in 2012. Some of that's going to be repeated. It needs to be repeated to rethink. And from what I heard tonight and just really being introduced to the council tonight, we've got some institutional knowledge here in this community, and so some of that historical information is extremely helpful in looking to the future. So to kind of give that as a little bit of a background, a strategic plan is just that. In context, most strategic plans oftentimes are management-driven and community-driven, where we would zero in perhaps on housing, infrastructure, perhaps recreation. Out of maybe 20 things you'd want to look at in a comprehensive plan. Strategic plan is typically not a comprehensive plan or a complete land use plan. So, and we can talk more and certainly ask any questions you may have about that. And also, we've had experience with each, any of those and all of those types. I would be the project manager if we're selected to work with the town. I would also be the lead planner, and you would see me a lot. Michael Harvey is our senior planner, and Michael was the zoning administrator in Nagset at one time. He's been on the coast a fair amount, and he's, he was handling our satellite office with our other firm that we had in Cedar Point, Himalaya, and we handled multiple jurisdictions up and down the coast for a number of years. I think you've probably seen that we've been kind of all over the map in North Carolina. We do work from almost Murphy, almost Murphy, to most recently Surf City, Wilmington, in terms of different types of projects and plans. And we're somewhat decentralized, we have a central office, but we're all interconnected in terms of modern technology. We don't have to be in the same room. But here, we would have three of us primarily present. Nadine Bennett would be the third person on our primary team. Nadine has about 15 years of experience in a host of small communities, mostly in the western part of the state and the Charlotte area. She hasn't done any KAMA plans yet. We'd like to introduce her to that process. We have, in my experience, we've had, I've had 10 KAMA plans in the county, the Finger Counties, most of the Finger Counties involved in those, to Pavlock. That was, I was, I was in the first team in North Carolina to actually, when I was working with the state, where we were actually doing the plans when they were mandated, to tackle how these things should be done. And so we've, it's evolved over time, and the process now is more friendly to allowing communities to do their own plans. And certification process is something everybody does. And I would take now just a minute to point a couple of things out in proposal for you. If you would take a look at the other supporting two people that you may want us to involve, we've anticipated you probably would want us to have here, and is included in our pricing, if that makes sense to you all. But if you were to turn to the, oops, I passed it. If you were to turn to page 14, bottom of page. Because in reading some of the information about the community and the work that you've been doing the last few years, and more recently, noticed the emphasis on capital improvements and many projects, or beach nourishment, as well as the fire department, with the volunteer fire department areas, we decided that we would like to add to our team and have part of this team a manager in public administration, and that's Lehman Bryce. I heard the reference to the Order of the Longleaf Pine earlier in the evening. He received that a year and a half, two years ago, for the work that he did in Davidson, North Carolina, which is in the forefront of urban design and implementation in North Carolina, and has formed a volunteer work with that and his leadership there. The reason we would like to suggest him as part of our team is because of the, there are some related, but not necessarily directly in the plan, financial implications for recommendations. And the, also, the ability to look at means to work with the management team in suggesting any means for future funding and finance means. And the other person is Gary Fankhauser. Gary is our landscape architect, urban designer. And some of the graphics you see in the proposal are fairly routine. And one of the things we did not know for sure, and we're not, and we've had some conversation with Wes today, as well as your manager, in a fully developed or pretty much fully developed community, as Southern Shores is, and with it primarily being residential and relatively limited amount of commercial, if there's any opportunities to redevelop an area, a hotspot area if there's any opportunities to redevelop an area, a hotspot area perhaps, or one where there's different issues, maybe a little bit older shopping area, if that was to come up in the next five years, if something was going to be done with that area, and how that may affect the immediate neighborhood, as well as in welcome, replacement, upgrading businesses perhaps. We've done a lot of that type of planning in Creedmore and, and that far western part of the state, Andrews, for example. And those plans basically are more site-specific. It's like a catalyst area or a study area within the plan, and you may not have that. We, we're kind of in thinking, you may have, but you may not have. But if there was something that came out of the process of public interest and the board's interest and the planning board, we would include that in our services during the timeframe and an opportunity to have that as an element within the comprehensive plan, and, and see if that would be something that would be part of your long-range vision as well. So that completes our basic team. As far as the time schedule, if you would turn to that, please, you'll notice the, we've suggested a probability of a 10 to 12-month timeframe. That's, that's consistent with a timeframe that would allow the town this coming year to meet, hopefully be able to complete the plan, get it submitted for review and certification by Coast Resource Commission, as well as the opportunity to give a little bit of flex time. There's always some flex time. Majority of the work would be about 10 months, we would estimate. If the planning effort was to begin in, say, February, or March, or perhaps April, it would be a little bit of a time squeeze there, but the times, that same 12-month period would hold up, and we'd be happy to try to address that. As far as the things that can allow things to slip, they typically are related to other conflicting priorities the town may have, or meeting schedules, and if in a while there's a meeting has to be bumped back or something of that nature. But if you look on page 24 on our projected schedule, we've outlined a, the initial startup phase of about two months to three months of, of reflecting on existing documents, current plans and policies, gathering information, updating the census information, reviewing the dozen or other plans that are out there and how they affect us, including our neighbors. I also mentioned in your code rewrite, seeing your, your sister communities, and how they are doing certain things. In this case, you, your, your neighbors are immediately on you, so how that's coordinated is important as well. But during that first two or three months, we would be gathering information and setting up, working with staff and the planning board in terms of finding opportune time for scheduling the first public input meeting. We use a number of public participation techniques, and they're fairly common, and I'm sure some of you experienced those here. And the, we do two types. The, the types that we'll certainly use all of social media, as well as the methods to get people to come to meetings, but we will establish a, a project to sit down and look at the scope, if we get going on this project, to be more specific about the types of methodologies. We tend to like to use charrettes. That's a landscape architect's funny term for gathering and generating a lot of information in a hurry. And that workshop would be something that would probably last, it could last actually two days. At one eve, so that way you pick up a day and an evening, and then another evening. And on the second evening, you're reflecting back on what was generated that first time, during the first meeting. So it doesn't get stale immediately, and we can then pick that up and inform the next step. As we move on, there would be additional meetings at the preliminary plan stage, and certainly at the final plan stage before the boards. We have, we're certainly aware of the CAMA guidelines and requirements for those things. We have GIS today, is, you've got excellent GIS capabilities in this area. We do that every day. We don't see a whole lot of time being devoted to changing a lot of that, other than simply picking up data layers that may have changed in, in the mapping, and then coming up with a, and so we can spend more of our time thinking and listening and proposing strategies to meet your vision. And lastly, in terms of my prepared thoughts on this, remarks, is the, is the various references we have, certainly, we would encourage you all to check with them. And again, the best examples we can come up with are not actually in the coast right now in terms of the plan and actually implementation. But I'll give you one, for example, in Creedmore, where it went from plan to development codes, to setting up the stormwater utility, implementing the stormwater utility, for example, and then, and training staff, as well as carrying out that particular element, among others. Major project on Highway 50 in the middle of town, traffic's difficulty. How do you do that? Same thing with Midland. Midland, North Carolina, is a new town. And unlike here, where you're fully, pretty much built out, a new town, you get a chance to think about what you want to be when you grow up. And in Midland, they didn't have a main street, they had two crossroads highways, 18 miles from downtown Charlotte. And there was no recognizable town, really, but destined to grow to 25,000 population in its 10 or so square miles of land, and how's that going to happen? So we were fortunate to be able to work from the very beginning of the thought process through implementation, to including creating a downtown plan, street layout, as well as the main streets being built, new town halls being built on it, and developers are buying up the properties, just like we were subdividing the property in, in the town. And the town's the lead on that, and people are really excited about it. And creating a focal area, and part of that was setting up a stormwater utility. It would help fund and maximize the ability to have enough density to support the utilities, as well as the infrastructure had to be built, and the tax base. So, and so it's beginning. We'll have to wait for another 10 or 20 years and see how it ends up. But be happy to try to answer any of your questions at this point, Mr. Mayor, members of the council.
Thank you.
I would have one request of you, actually. Please say hello to Gary Fankhauser. I worked with him more than 20 years ago in Columbia.
I won't hold that against you. Well, thank you.
It's funny, all that that you said would stuck in my mind. But much more did. I'm looking forward to reviewing these with the rest of the council.
Any other questions, council, comments?
I'm going to ask the same question of you, which is, we've got new VIMA maps that are good, that are about to come, or they're, they're proposed. There's some rather dramatic changes to those. How, how do you navigate that process, and how do you, how do you approach that? Knowing that, like you said, it is an evolution, we haven't done it in a while, and it's not to say, you know, who knows when we'll get to it again.
Right. Been through some of that process, and particularly after Hurricanes Fran and Floyd hit Kinston, we, and they let the water out of the dam and everything else, and then with Matthew, but prior to Matthew, we went through, and then after Matthew, excuse me, Hurricane Floyd, tells you where I come from. Hurricane Floyd, we were fortunate to find the digital mapping and the detailed mapping for 60% of the state was able to get done. And what's come out of that is this whole series of new updates of flood mapping. Those would be obviously a layer of information in terms of informing your V zones and what type of free board is, is involved or not with your structures. And certainly, that's one of the reasons to update plans. Things change. And, but you have a, an active, ongoing flood plain, flood damage prevention ordinance, and you're enforcing that. The biggest thing there is going to be public involvement and understanding, as well as to what do these things need to my property or to my neighbor's property. And it, it goes back to something, I, I don't know if this is a good thing to say or not, but I don't think there'll be a danger of it here. But many people don't pay a lot of attention to their dog ordinance until they pick up their dog. And what happens with these things is immediately when you see that coming with the, with, here, it's a sensitive thing because everybody knows what happens when your flood plain maps change. There's going to be an increase to somebody's cost of living or affordability. So, you know, those things are taken seriously. But I guess my short answer should have been, we're familiar with the process, and we knew they were being changed.
Thank you.
Any other questions, council? Thank you, Mr. Clark. I appreciate your time this evening.
You're very welcome. But thank you. You have a long agenda tonight, and it's nice meeting you all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks again. Under old business council, consideration again of zoning tax amendment ZTA-17-05, accessory structures of living space, tab 5 in your, in your book. Sam, do you want to give us an update on this for the second or third time?
Absolutely, absolutely. As the mayor just alluded to, this has been around for a while. So just a brief history of this is the, the first version of ZTA 17-05 was brought before the planning board on September 18th, and I like to think of that as version one. After the planning board reviewed it and recommended some potential amendments, that I refer to as version two, and that was presented to the council in October, October 3rd. And after my presentation, the town council liked parts of both versions one and two, and directed the planning board and town staff to revise the ZTA to include those pieces from each, and bring it back to town council. The staff draft, the combined version, I refer to as version three, was reviewed by the planning board on October 16th, and we are back to you on December 5th with our recommendation. The version three, the planning board made a few minor changes, and after those few minor changes, we found version three to be consistent with the land use plan, and is reasonable and in the public interest. And the planning board recommends approval of the version three of ZTA 17-05 as, as 17-05. And that is the version that you should have in your folders. Is there any questions?
Long story short, Sam, tell us the difference between this and what you brought us before.
The version three, and Wes, if you can, if I miss anything, would you please raise it? On, excuse me, page two of five, under part one, line, starting in line 11, dwelling, dwelling unit definition, down partway through that, on line 14, talked about initially some independent cooking. And in the discussions that we had the last time I was before you, we were talking about stove or oven and sleeping facilities, and it should have been stove or, and stove or stoves, and oven or ovens. And then, under line 21, the habitable floors and stories, that stayed the same, and that was the piece that, there were some, a few changes to the previous version, but I, I raised those at the last meeting. What have I missed, Wes?
The OSW District, I mean, district, taking out, or this will apply there, which OSW, OSW District is sound, ocean is sound. So it didn't apply to property that was overland, it would apply to like a boat house. So now I'm taking out.
Thank you, Wes.
So Sam, in, in an overview, to kind of complement what Gary's saying, so what we're talking about here is, to refresh for everybody, we've got accessory structure, and we're now saying that space need not be connected, and Wes, I'm looking at you too, because, correct me if I'm saying this incorrectly, it need not be corrected to the primary dwelling unit anymore. Previously, it would have had to have been connected via condition connection, so you could do a garage or a cabana. That space can now be conditioned, provided it meets flood requirements, so if it's below the base flood, it can't be done, but if, but if it were elevated or out of a flood zone, that would, correct me if I'm wrong, that would not be an issue. So that space can be conditioned. And, and would you tell us about the possible uses for that space? Is there any limitation on the uses? I'm just trying to bring everybody up to speed with where we are.
As, as far as limitations on that use, the, the one limitation that the, the council wanted, the last meeting, was that it could contain living space or cooking space. So that is the, the one, the one limitation the council wanted the last time.
Okay. So it's, so it's, it's an or, is what you're saying?
Yes.
So you can have, is that correct?
Sleeping or cooking, you can't have both.
Okay. That's, that's what I wanted to, to understand.
How about as far as bathrooms are concerned?
Bathroom is allowed.
Bathroom's allowed, and if a stove is allowed, along with the...
Then you can't have bedroom.
Can't have sleeping.
Right. You can't have stove, or, and bathroom.
Okay. One of the public commenters, I believe from the Chamber of Commerce, Karen Brown, had the impression that this was going to provide additional housing for people in the area. Based on what you said, that's not the case.
The intent here is that you're not allowing another dwelling unit. This is an accessory structure with living space. That's still a different question.
So, so in essence, if there was summertime help, you can't rent it out to those people. Is that correct?
As far as that, you guys, that would be a separate issue, that's not addressed here.
Yeah, but if we give, if we make it possible where you could rent it, then I do have a concern here.
So let me ask you a question, Wes. So you say, small house, I can put a small house on my property if I meet all the code requirements, I'm not over my 30% out there that's not attached with sleeping facilities, and then I can throw a microwave in there, can I rent it? And that's not addressed here, right?
If it meets the criteria of accessory structure, which is essential and is important to the principal structure, it may contain living space as defined here, as long as it meets that criteria, and as long as it doesn't constitute a dwelling unit, which would be having sleeping facilities and or stove, stove or oven, and or oven, stove or ovens. So you could have one or the other, but not both.
But you could have a hot plate, or a microwave, or a, or a...
Have sleeping facilities and a bathroom, as well as a toaster or microwave-
Refrigerator.
-hot plate, it cannot be without stove or oven.
You can have, you could have a small refrigerator, though, if you had room for it.
You could have a refrigerator.
Right. So you could actually live there. Yeah, okay.
You could have an office. It doesn't have to be bedroom.
So it's going to be habitable, then, is what you're saying?
Absolutely.
Yes, sir. The zoning tax amendment is to allow accessory structure with living space that do not constitute a dwelling.
Okay. So people are going to interpret that the way they want to, and next thing you know, we're going to have B and Bs and everything else popping up.
Airbnbs exist, sir?
Yeah, I know they do, but this is providing additional capabilities to, for that program.
That's up to you.
So what we would be doing is, in some ways, increasing the density of, of the community.
Now, increasing the dwelling, dwelling units per acre, because it does not-
No, I agree with that, but it's the-
Density is dwelling unit per acre. Here, in this case, if you're not allowing a dwelling unit, you're not increasing the dwelling unit.
Yeah, but you start adding toasters and microwaves and refrigerators.
And we can start to re-look at this language, I mean, it's up to you all. Do you all directly?
The only way I see to prevent it being a pseudo dwelling unit, don't call it dwelling unit, but in essence, I hate to say it, that's what it's leading toward, you either allow a bathroom or you allow a stove, but you don't allow both.
You all can totally have a bathroom.
That's what we do right now.
We have a bathroom.
Well, we have a bathroom, and we allow, we allow sleeping, and we also, we don't allow an oven. We allow them to cook there, but they can't have any oven. I don't think I understand what you're, what you're-
But what I'm saying is, I don't think we should allow people to have a bathroom and an ability to cook. Because if you put a hot plate or microwave or toaster in there, you're in essence providing that capability, and there's no way to enforce it.
So does that, excuse me, so does that mean that somebody wants to put a man cave above a garage and have a microwave in there, and maybe the ability to sleep, will be prohibited from that, or is you concerned about the rental of these spaces?
I'm concerned about the rental. I know-
And the rental issue is not addressed in the ZTA.
Okay.
But Airbnb, as you said, is already here. That's a form of rental.
It's already, already here.
So what we're doing is, we're providing additional housing in the community.
If, if council does not want those rentals in town, you can, you know.
I don't think most people want them.
Well, let me ask you a question, Sam, in your opinion on this. And I'm just thinking, okay, Chris and I live side by side, so if Chris puts a building out there on his property, a living space, I guess the question we need to ask ourselves is, what does this mean? I mean, we're gonna have, are we gonna have people coming back saying, why'd y'all mess with this? So I was building a living unit right out here on his property next to me, and it's going to devalue my home. Or, I mean, that's what I'm wondering. Like, the example you gave with a man cave above a garage, if you've got a garage, I have no, I have no problem with someone having a living space up there, or bar or whatever they want to have up there. But if we're building independent units, we're going from single residential to multi-residential on, on pieces of property, in essence. I know it's not, but it's close.
That's, that's what I'm afraid of.
And that's, and I'm not, I'm not slating for or against here. What I'm asking, I guess what we need to think about is, when they come next door to us, or next door to your neighbor, and that neighbor says, why are you letting them do this? You need to think seriously on this one.
So what do we fear?
Well, but, but I mean, what, how, your question is like, how did this come up?
Yeah.
And if you remember, we had a fellow come in, and he wanted, he was, he wanted to age in place, he wanted to be able to stay on his property-
Right.
-and have his son be in the main home, and he have his own dwelling, or not dwelling unit, habitable space-
Right.
-separate, separate from the house, and it's not existing. And existing, keep in mind, this is, this is already existing. I mean, we're, we've got this situation already. We've grandfathered these folks in. So I'm not seeing, I, to the density point, we're, I don't think we're saying, correct me if I'm wrong, Wes, that we're allowing these folks to go over 6,000 square feet.
We're not.
So this would be included in the 6,000 square feet. They'd still have to meet the rules.
And still could not exceed block coverage.
They still cannot exceed block coverage.
Or building heights.
Or building heights or any of these rules.
And still gonna have to meet, if they put a bathroom, they're gonna have to have-
Still gonna have to, and if they call it a bedroom, they're gonna have to have septic, they're gonna do, so, I guess-
And, yeah.
I mean, so, so we, we have a fact that, that a lot of folks in our community are getting older, and they want to be able to stay in their home. And I don't, I guess from my standpoint, I don't see that as a bad thing, and yes, there are trade-offs, but I guess I can live with that, that, that language, which is the trade-off being stove or bedroom as a middle ground. Could somebody abuse it? Of course. Of course.
I think it gives you an opportunity to have caregivers come help you stay in your own home. I think it gives you an opportunity to, if, like the gentleman who came and wanted to build a small structure adjacent to his, to his existing home, it gives him an opportunity to stay there where his family is. I think if, if we, if we look at it as a threat, then we're probably looking at it the wrong way. I don't see it as a threat, I see it as an asset. If, if I want to stay in my, on my property, I can't do any more. If I had a smaller home, I could, and have my, my daughter or husband come, come and live with us or take care of us. I see a real benefit to it. I don't see this as a threat at all. And I don't know how you're going to police it anyhow. I think that's where you get into a real, a real ball of wax, is, is do we have a bedroom police and a bathroom police and a, and a kitchen police? I don't know how staff would possibly do that. I think we need to, we need to set up, set some standards, which, which we have here, and say, we can live with this, and if we happen to get somebody taking advantage of it as an Airbnb, then we've been, we've been taking advantage of it. It's happening now anyway.
But that's, and, and for me, that's not the issue. I'm, I'm looking at maintaining the character of our town.
Right.
I mean, that's, that's the whole thing with me, is we are not that dense in our housing. We don't have those things. And, and the example you gave about the gentleman who came to us, this, from what I'm saying, from what I'm reading here, would not allow him to really do anything more than sleep there, right? I mean, he couldn't cook and eat there by code, or by-
Well, you could have a microwave.
Yeah, but, you know-
You could have a toaster oven.
Okay.
A fry pan. He could cook.
But the intent of our code is that they wouldn't be eating there and doing all their meals there and that type of thing. Our intent is that they sleep there or they cook there.
But, but I think that the problem that you have is, if you want to benefit that one case, you're gonna, you will open up possibilities for people to abuse it, but they're already abusing it.
That's Chris's point is well made.
I mean, so, so if, if you have a situation where you have two dwelling units, then that's where the enforcement piece comes in, and, and there's a complaint made, and then they'll do research to say, okay, we've got two dwelling units. Inevitably, that will happen, but that doesn't mean we throw out the positive effects with it.
Well, I'll tell you what, the way it's coming across, though, when she made those comments, it's pretty obvious what people think the intent of this is. And as Tom was saying, you know, and don't get me wrong, I'm not opposed to man caves and all that, you know, I may want one myself, but what I'm concerned about is the potential for the Airbnb thing to start bringing a lot of people in, and it becomes on a continuous basis, and the density of the properties are going to change, and the character of the town, and I'm-
Well, character's my issue.
I'm sorry?
Character's my issue of the town.
Yeah. This thing is about more than Airbnb, though. I mean, I get and I understand your concern as it relates to Airbnb, but this thing is also driven by the latest example, just the latest example that I've run into, is an elderly gentleman who wants to build a place where he can live on his house, I mean, on his property, he wants to build an accessory structure and still be part of the family, his son and family, who wants to buy and move into his own home. So there, and in Southern Shores, that's not an uncommon example of this. I would also like to ask, Sam, do you, or Wes, do you know what the other towns do as far as allowing habitable structures? I think Nag's Head allows Airbnb. I'm not saying we should follow them.
The town of Duck allows more than one dwelling unit on a lot. They allow accessory dwelling units. The town of Pecos is either holding a public hearing's mic, or sometimes, they're looking at the same level, but they also are looking at allowing, I believe, a dwelling unit, which is not what we're allowing. We're, the intent here is to, that's why there's the language for the sleeping or cooking and not both.
Right.
The intent is to prevent another dwelling unit, but to allow an accessory structure to have living space.
Karatech allows accessory structures, but they limit, they limit the size. That's how they deal with it.
Is there a fee or something? They don't express a fee.
No, it's, it's a percentage of the whole, but, but nonetheless, but you can put, they don't limit what's, what's in that space, it's just, it could be a bedroom, or it could be another kitchen, or both, frankly, but, so it's, it's not uncommon down here.
Right.
And given, and I guess I'll second, second Jim's point, that given our demographic, you know, we're gonna be, we're gonna be losing residents who aren't able to stay in their homes, and that, that's a concern to me.
That's, I've been here 20 years, and I've seen that come and go. Used to be most of it was more medical and, and care, which we don't have in Dare County, period. When people get to that age and they don't have family who's willing to relocate, and that's very rare, the, the example we're using is one, and we're changing our whole community is my, my concern. Well, it has a, it has an opening for, and, and Tom, don't get me wrong, because, you know, if somebody with a garage and wants to put a structure up there, I'm fine with that. Or a, there's plenty of houses in this community that have mother-in-law suites, so to speak, within the confines of their house, underneath or on top, or-
Already.
Already.
Right.
I understand that, but to put a independent house, we're-
But we've got a few of those. I mean, even on our street, we've got a few of those little structures, and, and it hasn't terribly changed the character. We just grandfathered quite a few of them in.
Exactly. All along the ocean, we have homes like that with a separate structure, garage with living, living space in it.
And I agree with you.
And it's been going on forever. I mean, it's been here all, a long time. I think we just acknowledge the fact that we have this such a situation and have, have some rules to have, have a better control in the future with either one or the other, either sleeping or eating, and, and move forward with what they presented to us. I mean, I, yes, Peter?
Mr. Mayor, appears y'all are deliberating on this. I did want to tell you that we discovered today, or realized today, that a public hearing had actually been advertised for this. Didn't realize that before, and I, I would just recommend that you allow the town attorney to open and close a public hearing and see if anybody wants to say anything, because it was advertised, and we need to do that for the record.
You got it, Ben?
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor.
Am I excused?
Y'all done with Sam?
Sam, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Also, also, I think Ms. Brown is gone, but could her, I think she anticipated her comments being part of the public hearing.
I think that they, given this isn't a quasi judicial matter, it's a legislative matter, anybody's comments at any time to any of the members that sway them in whatever way can and should be considered. The public hearing concept in the legislative arena is more just to make sure that the public has an opportunity to come and speak, and if she's come and spoke, then y'all have heard it, and y'all can definitely consider it. So we'll open a public comment on ZTA dash 17 dash 05. If you could raise your hand, I'm assuming, is there a sign-up sheet for this one?
No.
If you could raise your hand, if you'd like to speak to this, and when I call you, if you would come to the podium, state your name and your address, and we'll limit you to three minutes, but I see someone's hand raised, but I can't see it anymore. Yes, sir?
Glenn. Come up, Glenn.
My name's Glenn Weider. I live at 170 Clamshell. I'm also the president of CPOA, and we have this issue sort of tabled on our agenda until you folks, you know, make a decision on it. I just want to say a couple of things. First of all, the fear of Airbnb. If you're afraid of Airbnb, we should be trembling in our boots, because go on any Airbnb and type in Southern Shores, 250 spaces come up. Okay, so it's here. And just as a reminder, we are a resort community. We make money from being a resort community. There are a number of instances, I think, that exist now that fall into the same kind of category that could be problematic. You have a home that has five bedrooms. There are five, four families in that home, nine, 10 cars parked in the driveway on the right-of-way. Drive through Chickahawke any day in the summertime, and that's what you see. Okay? We have a car restriction. We don't enforce it. You have a couple of people that live in my neighborhood that have an Airbnb. You can look them up. As a matter of fact, they were here when we addressed this back in October. I live right across the street from one of them. I never heard a thing. I, I didn't even know they had it until they showed up at the meeting and I found out We've got year-round rentals on Clamshell that are renting single rooms to people. I mean, this is an unenforceable, it's, it's unenforceable to try to say we don't want Airbnbs in Southern Shores, in Chickahawke, in wherever. It is unenforceable. We don't have the manpower to do it, and like you said, do we want bedroom police? I, I don't think so. So, the long and short of it is, we're a resort community, and I think we should, we should act that way. And I would recommend to you that you pass this, ZTA 17 05.
Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn.
Is there anyone else in the public who'd wish to make a comment on this ZTA that's before the council? Seeing no one else, Mr. Mayor, I'll close the public hearing.
Counsel, I would make a motion that we, that we pass ZTA 17 05, as it, as it's been presented to us tonight, accessory structures with living space, tab five. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
So, a question, and Sam's still here, and I, I know I read it. Sam, anything that's conditioned counts toward the 6,000 and the 30%, right?
Correct. Yeah, that is correct.
Thank you, Wes. And that's in here, right?
Correct.
And it would count toward the 6,000 in the square footage, but it wouldn't count any, it wouldn't duplicate counting towards the lot coverage for whatever, like if it's on top of a garage, you wouldn't have a duplicate square footage to what was underneath it that was already lot coverage.
It's only-
Right. So I just wanted to make sure that there was, there could be-
But if it's an independent building-
Yes.
And it's a structure that's put up on somebody's property-
Mm-hmm.
-it's going to count toward that.
Yes.
And to clarify that, that's a good point. So let's say the example that Gary brought up with the garage, and then somebody having a man cave above or a space above, habitable space above, if only the space above was conditioned, only the 6,000, only the, only the top area would count towards 6,000, the garage area would not, because it is unconditioned.
The living, the living space would contribute towards the 6,000.
Okay, that's, that's what, but that's no different than it is now, because if you had a garage that's attached to a house-
Correct.
So once again, it's not part of the 6,000 square feet.
So is the garage, Wes, does the garage that's not conditioned count toward the 30%?
Garage, the structure contributes lot cover regardless of-
Regardless, that's, okay.
It's covered, it's covered in the ground, it's going to contribute to-
You gave another example of a wine cellar in here. Does that count toward the three, 6,000?
That is one of the exceptions- That is one of the exceptions, uh, that, that will not contribute, because the resident wine cellar is a business that is being conditioned, however it's not designed for human habitation and is not constantly living space.
I think there's more than water in town.
We have a motion, council, a motion that has been seconded.
I'd call the question. All in favor of moving ahead with approving ZTA seventeen zero five? Please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Same sign.
No.
So we have a three to two. The motion's been made and carried. You know who the, who the, who the players were? Sheila? Thank you. Uh, counsel, I'd like to, uh, take a five, seven minute break here, recess if we could, and then come back and address the new business. It's not time for this, for that. I will now tear a recess. Be back here at, um, eight, oh, eight-ten. Thank you.
So somebody builds a little house next to your house.
And they can't do it.
Yes, they can. No, next to you, on the property next to you.
No, I don't care.
I think it's, just think. Don't come complaining. You know, habitable includes these, you know that, don't you? You know, these-
Bee houses.
Excuse me. They're protected by federal law. So, but, but look here, Tom, but, but look here. We've got small houses that are very popular now. That's a big deal all over the country. Well, somebody pulls a small house in there and parks it on a property, the guy next door is, it's not an issue until somebody does it, and then the neighbor affects it or gets on. Because it got a small unit out there on the house. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I, I do. I understand that.
I, I'm not saying right or wrong, I'm just saying it changes. We are not able to. Well, the front beach is, but that's-
Sound.
Okay. But we've always been a respectful community.
Yeah, but you take, take a wall down, we're gonna take a wall down, they're gonna, they're gonna-
All right, now here's what I need you to do. Chris, I told Chris we don't have to talk to you. You gotta, when we start doing this thing, you gotta do nominations, things like that. We gotta work on you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm perfectly with you. I don't, I don't worry about it. I just get through with you guys.
Yeah, but, well, we're gonna help you, but, and, but I hope you don't think we're talking on you.
I don't think that.
Well, we're trying to, I looked at Chris and said, Chris, he's gotta open nominations. He says, I know.
All he's gotta do is say that.
No, but it's not, it doesn't look good for us to say that. You're supposed to be the leader. And don't come in here with, don't come in here with the set agenda the next time either, like that. Roger, just like I did the night.
Everything you wanted to get done, you got done.
I know, but you did put those committees back, you should. Well, you should've done it tonight. Even these guys talk about friends. You said in your run, you were gonna be, you were gonna be friends.
I don't think, I don't need to.
Well, I was gonna tell him to take that guy with the wine, with the wine cellar. And, 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 and total it on the six thousand square foot.
So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna-
Well, I think we do, but they ask you to be honest.
It's happening. It's coming. What you're doing is-
So, so somebody gets into the room, and you know.
Yeah, they're sorry, they're probably doing it.
And they do that, and, 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 yeah. They're gonna have the kids just like you.
Yep.
So, but they think, the planning board's already acknowledged that.
When I'm having a vacation, I'm, I'm, I'm not in that house.
Yeah.
I'm in favor of that.
I'm not, I'm not. It's like a small house. So, you know, you start around July, and you, and you, and you-
Yeah.
But that's not what you-
They're, they're better than that.
It's like, I mean, it's more than that. It's, it's-
I think so, they could rent it out.
And look at those, like, two, three, four, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, forty-one, forty-two, forty-three, forty-four, forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine, fifty, fifty-one, fifty-two, fifty-three, fifty-four, fifty-five, fifty-six, fifty-seven, fifty-eight, fifty-nine, sixty, sixty-one, sixty-two, sixty-three, sixty-four, sixty-five, sixty-six, sixty-seven, sixty-eight, sixty-nine, seventy, seventy-one, seventy-two, seventy-three, seventy-four, seventy-five, seventy-six, seventy-seven, seventy-eight, seventy-nine, eighty, eighty-one, eighty-two, eighty-three, eighty-four, eighty-five, eighty-six, eighty-seven, eighty-eight, eighty-nine, ninety, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ten, ten-one, ten-two, ten-three, ten-four, ten-five, ten-six, ten-seven, ten-eight, ten-nine, eleven, eleven-two, eleven-three, eleven-four, eleven-five, eleven-six, eleven-seven, eleven-eight, eleven-nine, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, forty-one, forty-two, forty-three, forty-four, forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine, fifty, fifty-one, fifty-two, fifty-three, fifty-four, fifty-five, fifty-six, fifty-seven, fifty-eight, fifty-nine, sixty, sixty-one, sixty-two, sixty-three, sixty-four, sixty-five, sixty-six, sixty-seven, sixty-eight, sixty-nine, seventy, seventy-one, seventy-two, seventy-three, seventy-four, seventy-five, seventy-six, seventy-seven, seventy-eight, seventy-nine, eighty, eighty-one, eighty-two, eighty-three, eighty-four, eighty-five, eighty-six, eighty-seven, eighty-eight, eighty-nine, ninety, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, 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 ninety-nine,
...they made another significant renovation and that was adding vinyl siding to the exterior of the building. So, these renovations did generate some significant discussion amongst our commission. We, as always, sent the, or rather Wes, sent the report to the State Office of Historic Preservation. You may have received that letter as part of your packet. That office actually had some concerns with including this building in the program. Their comments were that although the cottage does have historic significance as a flat-top, the state felt that it lacked the original integrity because of those renovations. I will say that the commission discussed this quite a bit and in the end, we decided, as with many things here in the Outer Banks, that the local context and sort of the idiosyncrasies of development and land use here on the beach warranted different considerations and a different thought process and different criteria than what might work in Raleigh or in other communities in the state. And so, we are recommending that you include it in the program. It was not a unanimous vote, it was actually four to one. I want to share with you some of our discussion and some of the public comments we received. We received a couple of public comments, both strongly in favor of designating it. In terms of the second story, that was added in 1980. Several of the original flat-tops in the 1950s, if you look at photos, did have two stories. So, this didn't give the commission, I don't think it gave us a lot of concern. The Graves Cottage, for example, which was built in 1948, had two stories. The garage in the front, I mean, you see that in flat-tops all over town. So, that, although that was an addition in 1980, that didn't give us a lot of concern. We felt that that was certainly in character with the flat-tops. The vinyl siding, I will say, is what generated the most discussion. There's no way around it. Vinyl siding is not historically accurate for a building from 1950s. But, in the end, we decided that the siding is just one of the many elements that makes a flat-top a flat-top. Rather, the exterior siding is one of the elements. So, this built, this building was built on a cement slab, still made of cement blocks, still got a flat roof, it's still got the extended overhang, it still has the exposed soffits, it still has the bright white exterior walls and the jewel tone trim. I told you this was going to be the most exciting presentation of the night and it's for what I'm about to say. It's like pornography, I know it when I see it. When you look at this, you know it's a flat-top. In fact, it was featured in our state magazine in a story about flat-tops. I mean, you just look at this and you know it's a flat-top despite the vinyl siding. To me, this house also shows that a family today can adapt a historic structure, maintain its historic character and charm, but also adapt it for modern living, modern living here on the beach. There are some unique threats to flat-top cottages here in Southern Shores that you just don't see in other communities and with other historic structures and other places in the state. Since 2013, eight flat-tops have been demolished, most of them on the oceanfront. They're built on cement slabs. Unlike some of the historic structures down the beach in KDH and Nagshead, you can't move them when they're threatened. They're just, they're just where they are. We have extreme economic pressure here in Southern Shores. The land value, especially for these oceanfront cottages, far exceeds the building value. So, as a result, when a family has to sell, either because of high property taxes, high insurance values, or just some change in the family situation, inevitably, especially on the oceanfront, these flat-tops are demolished. On the Historic Landmarks Commission, we talked a lot about, you know, what are we here for? We're here to maintain the historic charm of the beach and to do that, we need to give our property owners some options. Designating this as a historic landmark gives this family some options. It gives them a tool to maintain that flat-top for generations to come. It can help save this flat-top. Another difference between Southern Shores and some of the other historic landmarks programs, we have 27 properties total in Southern Shores that are eligible for this program. That certainly doesn't mean that all 27 of those families will apply for designations. That's just what we have left. Kill Devil Hills, in contrast, has 27 designations, so their inventory, their stock of historic buildings is far larger. They add one or two each year, but we're starting from 27. In the end, I think the commission decided that we've got to do something to save the historic character of this town. So, I urge you to approve our recommendation and designate Atlantica as a historic landmark in the town of Southern Shores. Any questions, which I will quickly ask Wes to answer?
Any questions, Council?
I'd like to make a comment.
That's fine.
I attended, I've attended a few of the Historic Landmark Commission, the HLC meetings over the last year, not enough, but I know that they discussed this at length about whether or not to include it in a program primarily because of the vinyl siding. I think that if the Historic Landmark Commission has wrestled with and can justify approving this, I would go along with that. In fact, I'll make that motion to approve it.
Thank you. Motion to approve, I have a second.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Chris.
Just, just to be clear, what you're approving is the ordinance designating it at the end of the packet?
Right.
Yes.
Which is...
But we should have a discussion with you.
We have to.
I have the same concern that some of the members of the, I have the same concern from some of the members of the, at least one of the members of the Historic Landmarks Commission had about the vinyl siding. I don't know how you dodge that. It's there.
Well...
It's part, it's part of the structure. It wasn't part of the structure originally. And I'm really having a difficult time with it. I'm not sure exactly what to do. I think, I understand where Laura Lyte's coming from. I do think it's something we should try to protect, the architectural style itself and the houses themselves. But where do we draw the line? I don't know where we, where it stops.
You ready for discussion?
Sure.
Okay. I have, I've looked at this, I even went out there today. I've, well, the addition, the second floor addition changed the entire structure. I have a question. Did they use concrete block when they added that second floor?
I'm not aware of it.
Okay. They did also replace all the windows when they did the vinyl siding, am I correct?
Yes, but I believe it's part of the ordinance that we, those are not part of the consideration for our little program.
Well, before I moved to the, before I moved to the Outer Banks, I lived in a historical district and I think, they called them the hysterical society where I lived. But if you made a change of anything to your outside, you had to go through a huge process and vinyl siding was one thing that eliminated it as well as replacing windows. They encouraged you to put storm windows, actually, which didn't look very nice at all in the community, over the original windows. So, but the addition takes away from the structure. I know it looks like a flat-top, I agree with you. But I have issues that they changed that plus adding that deck. The garage, you know, I looked at two more. The one at 98, there's a yellow garage, the one that's for sale right there. But that vinyl siding and those windows take it out of historical to me. Something has to be, an automobile has to be 35 years old to be classified in North Carolina as being an antique. That house was renovated in 2000, so it's less, that siding, those windows are less than 17 years old. So, I have, I have issues with that too, Tom, because in a historical significance, and I'd love to keep them all. They're building one up on Wax Myrtle. You just built a similar one down, on Down on Ocean Boulevard. So, you know, hopefully some people will use that design, but I do have issues with, like your members did, with the vinyl siding and the windows. But I also have issues with the change in the structure because when you look at the old and the new, there's a huge difference in the building. So, I couldn't support it.
I mean, I guess from my standpoint, I know how often in our environment, windows and siding are replaced. So, this issue that we're having with windows and siding is inevitable, even from the house that we've already approved. And I, and having, I've been in this house and I think, I don't think it is block upstairs, just, that's just my gut because the stairway doesn't line up, just one of those little things. But, but that doesn't bother me so much because these are also living, evolving situations. It is very much in keeping with the character of it. At some point, they're going to replace that vinyl siding and they may come back with a material that's more compatible with the original intent. And if we have it in our program, we can then control that. We have the ability. Now, they have to come back because it's an exterior appearance and they have to come back and get approval. And I don't want to lose, lose this, this property because if we lose it, we lose it forever. The siding can be replaced. I know a lot of the older homes had asbestos, quite a bit of asbestos. In a true historical sense, what are you going to ask people to come back with asbestos? It's a very durable product, but not likely. So, in that case, you'd look for an alternative that would be consistent with the original. And so, I, I guess I'd feel, I want them to come back and fix that too, but I worry that if we don't, we're going to lose it and we're going to lose the opportunity to have them fix it because the siding's not going to last forever, even though it is vinyl. I mean, they're going to need to repair this thing and at that point...
So, we're going to show you some signs of...
Yeah, at that point, and windows just don't last down here. That, that doesn't worry me so much either. You know, give them 10 years and the windows will need to be done again, so.
I'm kind of swayed by the argument that if we just, if we do not approve this, then it's a huge blow in getting other people to apply for designation of their properties. I know that's not a good reason for approving this right now, you know, this one, but I do think that, like Chris is alluding to, there are changes throughout time in building codes, building processes and everything. And we're not taking, we're not trying to take a freeze frame shot of these buildings in the 1950s, but that's a flat-top to me. You know, it meets the criteria for, it's what I would call a flat-top. So, anyway, I think that, like I said before, if the Historic Landmark Commission is arguing this out, I would support it.
I'd like to comment too.
What?
I don't want to repeat everything Gary said, but the vinyl siding does give me a real problem in that deck up there as well. The second floor, if it was concrete block, I could probably live with that, but if it's not, if it's framed, that's not keeping in the architecture of the original building. I know down in Nagshead, and some of you probably have more knowledge than I do, but a lot of those historical homes down there, I don't think you're allowed to make any modifications unless those modifications are in tune with the original architecture. I know, I had a home, I had a Victorian home in Athens, Georgia, and I was looking at getting it put on the National Register and the requirements were so stringent, I just couldn't do it. And after you do get that status, you've got to maintain it and it's a bear. And I can sympathize with these people, but in keeping with the spirit of the requirements to be set aside as an architecturally significant building, I think you've got to keep it architecturally the same as it was originally built. So, I'm sorry, I can't support it.
I think the local context that Laura Lyte mentioned is a key phrase here. This is unique. It's, you know, we've got to put the changes that happen out here in local context.
Can I ask a question? And I don't know the answer to this, Peter, Wes, maybe it will guide me. Is there an opportunity to apply conditions to, for council to apply a condition? And the condition that I'm thinking of would be that at some point in the future, we would not allow them to go back with vinyl siding. They're going to need to replace this and they need to come back with a material that's compatible with the original flat-top.
And then they can reapply.
Well, but, but, but they would, they would need to reapply, they'd need to get it approved. But they, but they'd only, this, this situation where we've got vinyl siding would only exist for a short period of time, hopefully, hopefully, you know, five, 10 years and at that point they come back and they have to then have the commission approve the material of what's going in there.
I think I'd have to either consult with Ben or defer to Ben. The council did adopt a governing ordinance for the program. I'm not sure what that allows or does not allow.
Peter, do we have a set of established standards that say you must replace this with this or...
The only standards you have, the town has is in the government, is in the ordinance you adopted. And I believe it does adopt by reference to historic preservation guidelines in some, that Department of Interior puts out.
It does, and the guidelines, the more specific guidelines relating to someone applying a certificate of appropriate to make the changes after the property is already designated.
That's true, thanks. That's, that's right.
And that's what I'm going, because, so that they, they, they would not be able to get the certificate of appropriateness.
If they pulled the vinyl off, yeah, they would have to come, if they did any renovations to the property, they would have to go through a COA process.
And then they have, then that's when you try to determine if what the changes they're making are consistent with the guidelines. If they are, then you can award a certificate of appropriateness.
I couldn't, I couldn't...
But there's no, but there's no conditional approval.
I'm not aware of it. This isn't, this isn't, this isn't, I think it's one of the, this isn't a problem that we, we, I think, can attach conditions. This is important to the...
Okay, okay. Okay.
I'm not aware of it and I've read about 50% of the ordinance while we're talking about it, but I haven't gotten to the end of it, but I don't see anything that's likely to stand out as providing conditions. You either designate or you don't designate and you designate after it follows the right process. And I don't know that it would have conditions, but again, that may come back to the certificate of appropriateness area where if they're going to have to make a change, I'd have to look at that more carefully, but you may be able to at that mandate a more histor, you certainly would not likely preclude them from having a more historically correct representation on the exterior, exterior of the house. But the question of whether or not you could force them to do something different than what they have now, if they made a change, I would say it's unlikely that you could do that.
And as I recall, the flat-tops almost universally were built with, with block.
That was built from the sands of...
Yeah, but they, they didn't have, they didn't have...
And block was readily available when they did this renovation.
They didn't have cedar shakes or cedar siding.
Right.
They were different than anything we have now. So, I don't, they wouldn't go back to that, I would say to me, especially when you get the second floor.
But it's, it's tricky though because you wouldn't build that way nowadays. You would never build an uninsulated block wall and then try to condition because it's just, it's a losing battle. It's so humid. So, you'd come back with another material, but at that point, you'd need to get the certificate of appropriateness.
But you can add insulation to the interior without...
Right, but you could also add it to the outside. I mean, you can add insulation to the outside and put a stucco type...
Put a stucco type thing.
And that's very much in character with it and they could still do that. And that's what I don't want to, because it's fairly easy to put a, you know, three-quarters inch board on the outside and essentially drive it or ephes material over the surface.
But we're talking, asking them to do a significant renovation to a home and, you know, we really can't ask them to do that.
We may not be able to now.
We can't require that.
We can't require that. No, I hear what you're saying, but I don't want to lose it.
And don't get me wrong, this is a flat-top. It's just not historical, in, in my opinion. And that, you know, when you put, most places, they use materials that are common to the area when it was built.
Right.
And even like I would go along with, had they put slats up there instead of vinyl siding.
Yeah.
Or if they'd have put cedar shakes up there, Tom, even though it's not at the time, it would have made, the bottom would have maintained its character as well as coming in with something that's used now on the Outer Banks.
Right. Now, I understand what you're saying. But we do have a motion.
A motion and we have to make, make a decision, guy.
No, I'm sorry.
We closed that, didn't we? Do we close the public hearing? Or do we have to have...
No, we have a public hearing on this.
There is a public hearing.
Yes, there is.
It's advertised.
If you, if you can open and close it, please.
It's been a long meeting, I can't remember if we've done it or not yet. But you do need to have a public hearing on this.
Okay.
And we can open it if there are any, just like the last one, if there are any members of the public who wish to speak to this consideration of the ordinance designating 142 Ocean Boulevard as a historic structure. If you could raise your hands and I'll call you to come forward. You can state your name and address and going once, seeing no one, Mr. Mayor, I'll hand it back to you.
Thank you. Public hearings not closed, is that what you're doing? There was a motion on the floor, Council, which I think I made.
Jim.
Jim made it to approve.
I made a motion to approve the designation as of 142 Ocean Boulevard as a historic landmark.
And we had a second. We've had discussion.
Oh, yeah.
I call for the question. All in favor of approving the Historic Landmark Commission report? And would you say it was, we're actually approving?
The ordinance designating the property and the structure located at 142 Ocean Boulevard as a historic landmark.
I made one more comment before you call the vote, Tom.
Sure.
If you do vote to designate this property, I think you're going to really hurt the, the whole intent of the historical landmark designation because other people that may have similar changes to their property are going to come forward and we're going to have to act on it and we've got to be consistent. I think you should go by the strict guidelines and consider the fact that we're starting to weaken or dilute the intent of the designation. I, I agree with Gary and everybody else, it's a flat-top, but it's not in keeping with the architecture of the town.
And the integrity of the structure.
Yeah.
And Wes, can I ask a question of Wes?
Sure.
Okay, Wes, I noted in here, the North Carolina Department of Natural Resources and Cultural Resources, okay, these houses, do they go on a register there?
These do not. This is not the same as the National Register of Historic. This goes on our local, our local adopted list of landmarks.
Because I noticed that the person there had huge issues with this being a designated home.
Most of the respondents, responded to Wes's inquiry had also had reservations about it.
But this one is the North Carolina Department of...
That's a required form, right? Our ordinance and the state statutes require that the State Historic Preservation Office must provide comments or be provided, given the opportunity to provide comments on all applications and this was their comment, these were their comments.
All right. And the second question I'm going to ask you is, do they have to be flat-tops to be designated into this program?
They do not.
Okay, so that would open the door for other homes.
It could, any structure you all feel is...
If it's old enough, yeah.
Only has to be...
Historically significant and maintains...
Only has to be 17 years old because this was remodeled in 2000.
Well, historically significant.
Which means my home would be eligible for historical designation.
You do have the limitation that it's got to be within the inventory that was formed. And as Ms. Costa said, the inventory is only 27 homes and it included this house when you did the inventory. Looking at the requirements for your vote tonight, that's primarily the only requirement is that it's, that it comes under that inventory and that you go through the right process.
Right.
Which includes, as Mr. Haskett pointed out, having cultural resources comment and you consider it, but you're not bound by that.
That should drive, I think.
And since, and since Wes is up there, I'd like to commend him for taking the time and doing the research that you did.
Yes, sir.
That you gave us. I mean, you sent it out to a list serve, I'm sure, and, and you had quite a few responses.
Thank you. I was doing what the commission had asked, but the, as to the inventory, that is correct. We do have the adopted inventory that the commission adopted and so, yes, technically speaking, the properties that could be designated do, I think they all are flat-tops. I don't think...
I believe there are two or three non-flat-tops.
Okay, two or three that were not flat-tops.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, so there are a couple that do not have to be flat-tops.
The, the other thing that I, that I'd bring up in the discussion is that having kind of worked with Kill Devil Hills on their designation, they've got some fairly quirky houses that are there and it's not unusual for these houses to have additions over the years. And sometimes they're not even in character with, with what's being added to and this one is very much in character with it. And they still make the designation, they still approve the designation. And the reason they do that is that that original structure is a living thing and they want to preserve it. The town makes a decision to preserve it. So, anyways, that's it.
If you'd have said Nagshead, I would have listened more closely, but Kill Devil Hills, historical...
They've got more than you think. They've got, they've got quite a...
They do, on, on the beach.
And just, just to let you know, Nagshead doesn't have...
I know, they have a district.
Yeah, they have a district that's in the National Register.
Right.
But there are no limitations or registrations or, or what people can do with those houses.
And those can be new houses. So, your new house could be there as long as you use their, follow their rules and meet their points and use their materials.
But it wouldn't be a historical house.
No, but it's in the, it's in the, what is it, the historic district.
So, let's vote. Ordinance number 2017-12-01, all in favor of approving ordinance 2017-12-01. Please sign a sign by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. So, the motion was made and carried to approve the designation of that piece of red property as a historic, as a member, a part of the historic landmark homes. Thank you, Council. Let's go back to the agenda real quick. Consider the bids received for Skyline Road Stormwater Management Improvement so we can advise our town manager what to do with that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. In the envelope prepared for you are the construction bids secured for your approved Skyline Road Capital Improvement Project, which is basically a stormwater management improvement project for the intersection of Skyline Road and NC 12. The bid tabulation sheet is in that envelope and you will see on the bid tabulation sheet two firms that town staff consider to be well-qualified to perform this work. You also see the lump sum bids received from the two qualified submitters. Just very briefly, I'm certainly not an engineer nor the town engineer designed this, but the project itself is basically a rebuild of the intersection entrance. It's an elevation of the existing street in that location and then a slight angling to the north to provide stormwater runoff to an infiltration area in the town right away. So, that is the design of the project. When the borings were done on that particular project, it was discovered there's absolutely no standard base underneath that street at that intersection. So, when the borings came back, the data came back on the borings, the engineer informs me that they had to make the decision to rebuild at least that section of Skyline Road to be able to work with, with a fix for the stormwater management challenge there. You'll see the two lump sum bids and staff recommends that you award the lowest qualified, qualified bid for this particular project and authorize a contract.
Any questions for the Peter Council? I'd make a motion that we accept the bid from Barn Hill Contracting in the amount of $45,290 to do the work at Skyline Road reconstruction site. I have a second.
I'll second, Tom.
Any further discussion?
Peter, do you have a clue why the bids are so much higher than the engineer's estimate range?
Yes, I do have a clue. The indication from the town engineer is that this is a small project and that when he looked at the bids and conferred that there are no other projects in the area that they could have coupled this with and that's why he surmises that the lowest bid is about $8,000 or... is about $8,000 off. That's basically the only indication I have that was different.
That would make sense.
Was there any discussion of the discrepancy between the two bids? There's a big jump there?
There's a big jump.
No, there was not.
You really can't get, get off the record.
Yeah.
My, my, my bet is that RPC, RPC is busier than Barn Hill right now.
Okay.
All in favor, Council?
Aye.
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 Peter, you go ahead and exercise this. Motion was made and carried. General public comment, anybody else signed up to that?
You have one more, you have one more thing on the agenda?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I almost forgot.
He's been patient, he's been very patient.
I was going to leave you out, Glenn, I quickly forgot about you. Consideration of planning board alternate, alternate appointment of, of Glenn Wyder. Wes, you want to talk about that one, or do you need to address that?
No.
Sam?
I make a motion we appoint him. I make a motion we appoint him.
Well, I'm, I'm fine with that, I'm...
I think that's, I think we can move.
Are you okay with that, Council, we appoint him? All in favor?
Second motion.
All in favor?
He's been, he's been waiting very patiently out there.
Yes.
Okay, Bonnie, thank you. Was it worth the wait, Glenn?
I think he had signed up when he wanted to speak about the last one.
He did. Thank you, Bonnie. You want to speak to us again, Glenn?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I actually signed up here.
I know.
Right again.
I got it, thank you.
Thank you.
We're down to other business. Just a quick reminder that we are, on Saturday morning, this, this coming Saturday morning, the 9th, we have a 10K run in Southern Shore, starting from this, from the Marketplace Shopping Center called the Festivus Run. A lot of fun, Santa Claus will be there, and he's, he's a great Santa, you'll love seeing him. It's, you get pretty good turnout for this, 150 or more people usually. And they break it up in three parts, I think they have a one mile, and a five, and a 5K, and then a 10K. That'll be going on Saturday morning at 8:30. The run will kick off at 9 o'clock.
Do they have the aluminum pole? Festivus aluminum pole, I don't know, it beats a strike? I'm just wondering.
Actually, I've, I've been there for three years now, this is our year.
How about the, the part where they let people know how they let it down over the course of the year, is that meant also?
One last thing I, I mentioned, there's a, depending on, regardless of the weather, the boat club's planning and doing a boat parade on Saturday night, the same evening as the Festivus Run, that should be a real thriller. It's going to supposed to be 38 degrees and possibly raining, but you're, all the SSCA members are invited to that if they want to come and, and enjoy white bean, white bean chicken chili with us, or whatever we want to have for dinner, and desserts. Chowder? Oh, is it chowders in it? Fish chowder, okay, it'll be, it'll be clams and shrimp, chowder, that's right, thank you, Council members' comments. Starting on that end, there if you want anything to say.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
And don't forget, Peter said this earlier, Coyote Meeting tomorrow night, here, at 6:00.
6:00. Chris?
No, no comments. Happy Festivus.
Thank you.
Who is that?
I don't know when the date is.
Just wish everybody a great holidays, that's the best.
Thank you, Fred.
I have no comments, but I do wish everybody a safe holiday, too.
Thank you. At this time, I'll...
Make a motion to go in closed session.
Make a motion to go in a closed session.
Second.
Have a second. We'll convene in a closed session in about five minutes, once everybody else has a chance to go.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
We have all, motion approved, we go in the closed session in about five minutes. Thank you.